I guess so.
I keep forgetting that you can do that in this term. Turn battery saver on automatically at 10%. I think when you restart it's going to go back. Yeah. So right now I don't know. Yeah, it's gonna start dimming a little bit. And then it'll put the background out.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this special session, budget session, of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. I believe somebody sent out a memo that we were giving away money here tonight. So, but you're gonna have to earn it, that's all I can say. And I think that the level of significance of this meeting and then our budget process has taken on a whole new level of importance here in our community. I see Philip Cheek back here, he's got on his necktie and shirt, dress shirt. And Ashboro High School's having graduation tonight, and he's on the Ashboro City School Board, he's here. But I think you'll have to agree that the biggest indication of the importance of this meeting, I have it on good authority, that tonight, today, is Elbert and Rose Lasters' anniversary, and Elbert's back here in this crowd tonight. I guess Rose took herself to dinner tonight. All right, but seriously, we do welcome you tonight, and I know that you're here relative to this budget process, and those of you in your respective departments play an important role in that, helping to put this together, and then here tonight to have your say on what your needs are, and the level of importance that they are to serving the citizens of this county. And it's our job to vet all that and to adopt a budget that this county will operate on from July 1 of '22 through June 30 of '23. Comes around this time of year every year, and it's part of the process, so we welcome you, we have an agenda. If you don't, if you're pleased with your budget, you don't wanna, you don't have to speak unless you just want to. I know some of you here are to support, say, maybe defend your budget request, why you think it's important that you presented the budget that you did. So, and we're here to listen and to what you have to say. So, and we also remind you that we are live with those that are watching on Facebook or YouTube, as we have been for the last two or three years, and it will be available going forward if they happen to miss our meeting tonight. So with that, we will get started, and our first presenter is from Human Resources, Jill Williams.
Good evening Chairman Frye and members of the board. So this evening I'm here to speak with you all about recruitment, retention, and efforts to reward and recognize our county employees. You see the plaque, as you know, earlier this year Randolph County was recognized by the Ashboro Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce, as the 2021 Industry of the Year. And much of this can be credited to your leadership in bringing industry to the county, but also to our county employees for their ability to work and serve the community in the face of many challenges, including the C-word, and also staffing shortages. So as I've shared with you over the years, Randolph County employees are very marketable in the marketplace because of the skills, education, and experience that is required of them to perform their jobs. My voice is shaking. At the start of this fiscal year, there were 919 full-time and part-time budgeted positions, and of these positions, 794 or 86% have some level of advanced education, certification, or specialized pre-employment work experience. So again, our employees are very marketable. I need to be moving. So in order to recruit, retain, and recognize county employees, we are proposing two primary initiatives this year: a 5% cost of living adjustment and increased merit funding. This slide shows the market cost of living adjustments and even a vacation bonus that was awarded to, by the Board of County Commissioners, to our employees over the last 10 years. And of course, this year is to be decided, but we are recommending 5%. And this slide just shows what a 5% cost of living impact would be to an employee making $17 an hour. The annual impact would be $1,768, but that's also an increase to their contributions to the retirement system and to the 401K. Merit, so we, for the upcoming fiscal year, the county is requesting an increase in merit funding. The request is to increase the current merit funds, that's the merit that we already have that's ongoing year after year, by $100,000, and to request a one-time adjustment of $500,000 in order to recognize many of our public safety employees for what they have had to do to respond to during the past few years. The merit increases for public safety employees will have primary emphasis on those positions where employees were working with the public face-to-face in a non-controlled or a limited controlled environment, that will be the primary emphasis, and where they worked, have been working a majority of the time over the last couple of years. The market for public safety positions has drastically changed over the past couple of years, and the county wants to recognize and reward those employees for showing up to work day in and day out to get the work done. These merit adjustments will move employees' pay, up the pay scale, and will be an increase to their compensation year after year as long as they are employed by the county. Some merits, what we've seen in a lot of other jurisdictions is there have been one-time, like a lump sum payment because of the limited timeframe of the ARPA funds, but the county wants to be able to give employees a permanent increase that will increase their pay year after year, and again, increase their benefits, their 401K and retirement. We do hope that this will help retain our employees, again, who did what we've asked of them. So this is just merit in general. So, over the past, this shows how many merits have been given over the past three years. Merit as an ongoing increase to employee was re-instituted in 2015, increasing the funding of the merit pay program. That $100,000 will allow departments to be more effective in recognizing, rewarding, and retaining high-performing employees. Because a challenge with our current merit pay program has been that the merit money has not increased in seven years since 2015. As salaries have increased, either due to classification studies, or cost of living adjustments, or market adjustments, there's just not as much to go around. This fiscal year of 919 positions, 133 employees received merits. As you can see, this was an increase from the 2021 fiscal year. Well, it was an increase in the merits. It was $601 average, and last year it was $567 average. Fewer employees did receive merits this year though, 133 as compared to 167 last year, and that's because both the merit pot of money has been shrinking and because employees got larger pay increases. But if we can increase that, we think it will have more impact for recognizing those employees, high-performing employees. Now, I'm going to cover some things that the county might consider in addition to the COLA and merit due to the, just the turmoil in the labor market. The county has had two classification studies since 2012. The Springstead Study, which moved positions to open ranges, was implemented in April of 2012. And most recently, Piedmont Triad Council of Governments conducted a three-year study from 2017 to 2019. So they reviewed one-third of our positions over that period of time and made market adjustments as needed, with the third year being implemented in July of 2019. But due to the instability in the labor market, the county may, may need to consider updating the classification sooner, or the classification plan sooner rather than later, in order to help ensure that the county remains competitive with the market, which includes a mix of private businesses and other government agencies. The county participates in the School of Government Salary Survey and Benefits Survey every year. It's done in the fall, and then we get the results in the early part of, like, we got, I think, January of this year. So I've pulled some data from the School of Government, I just want to share with you some additional options to consider. Of 79 counties who reported, 51 pay 50 to 100% of employee-only dental insurance. Of those counties that pay for dental insurance, the premium's about $30 per employee, the county's paying an average of $18, with the employee paying 12. And so I said if we had 900 employees at $18 for a full year, that would be about $195,000. And of course, not all employees might participate, but if 900 did, then there might be some tax benefits, but that's, that's just a benefit to consider. 401K for non-s sworn staff. 81 counties offer 401K to non-s sworn employees. 54 make employer contributions, and 27 make no employer contributions. Of the counties that contribute to the 401K, half of them, or 27, contribute 3% or more. And Randolph County makes up to a 2% match. So if an employee contributes 1%, the county contributes 1%. If the county contributes, if the employee contributes 2%, the county contributes 2%. If the county, if the employee contributes 3%, the county still does 2%, so it's up to a 2% match. Longevity. Of those counties responding to the School of Government Survey, 64 reported providing longevity pay. We've never had longevity pay in place in Randolph County, but as we look at recruitment and retention challenges, this is something that we wanted to mention, as this is a benefit that many other local governments, both cities and counties, are offering. Turnover. You all know each year I come to you in the hopes of this number going down, and in all the years that I've done this, this is the highest this year, in 2021, so. And as I've shared with you, turnover is costly, efficient delivery of services is reduced, both because of fewer staff, and the staff that are remaining are performing more duties, and then we lose institutional knowledge when people leave, so it's just, it's a real challenge all around. And the remaining staff are stretched and stressed because of the additional duties. Our turnover is 18.78%. I did, I ran some numbers from January through May of this year, and it's still right at 18%, 18.1, it's not quite as high, but it's right there at it. Interestingly, one of my staff pulled some data about vacant positions, I believe last week, and there are approximately 88 vacant positions across the county. And that is a real, that's almost 10% of our workforce, if you look at us having 919 part-time and full-time positions. Most are in our largest departments, you know, social services, sheriff's office, emergency services. And that's why we really need to work on helping with our recruitment efforts, recruitment, retention, and ways to retain and attract employees. And so, for HR, I am requesting an additional position this year that I do hope will allow us to expand our recruitment efforts in my department. Human Resources is requesting an administrative assistant, administrative assistant office support position that would provide dedicated administrative support for the department. The duties would include answering phones, managing personnel files, scanning, and assisting other HR staff with projects. This position will provide front desk duties, freeing up the rest of us to perform duties like expanding our recruitment efforts and working on classification. So, I appreciate your time and your attention, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
When you talked about the increase, suggested increase for public safety employees, is that all public safety employees, so whether it's, you know, sheriff's department, emergency management, emergency services, 911 operators, everybody?
All of those, yes.
Okay.
But, but within those, there may be groups that were more public-facing than others. So there were, and you'd have to help me think, we were, having the department help us with that. So, I get, let me, DSS might be a little easier for me. So like, social workers that went into homes, and they could not control the environment that they were entering. They could wear masks, or they could do certain things, but they might have to take a child out of, you know, foster care, they might have to take a child out of a home. Those types of positions are very clean, clear-cut, but an income maintenance case worker, you all know that I'm pro all of our employees, but there's certain employees-
Yes, I am too.
-that we had, that were better able to control their environment, or, or maybe even be in separate rooms to get, to maintain safety and distance. But yes, we're looking at all, all public safety.
Right, so who will determine that, the department heads?
We have, we have met with emergency services, sheriff's office, health, social services, and, and discussed the criteria, and yes, they are reviewing that.
Right, because like, if you think about, say, take 911 telecommunications, well, they're not forward-facing.
Right.
And yet, gosh, look at, you know, what they faced over the past few years, and we're losing them right and left. And so I feel like we, you know, in all fairness, if that's what we throw out, well, you had to have been more forward-facing, then some of those who worked just as hard, who are not, would be left out of that equation, and we need to keep them all.
Yeah, and they are in the group. Because we tried to look at the ARPA guidelines too, even though this is a Randolph County merit program, and the ARPA guidelines did include those positions.
Okay, because we, like I said, if the goal here is to recruit and retain-
Yes.
-then I'd rather err on the side of being a little more generous, given our budget, I mean, I know we have budget constraints, but I'd rather err in that direction and keep those valuable people in place than for maybe, you know, a supervisor to feel like, well, I'm not getting that, and yet, you know, I worked overtime, or I did, you know, this or that, or whatever. So I want us to make sure that, you know, that we're considering each person there.
And they are, and the ARPA guidelines talk about employees that work in a position where they are primarily face-to-face, working with the public and support staff, and it can include support staff, so 911 would, could be considered support staff. So, is that helpful?
Yeah, and if I have questions, I'll call you later, but I want to make sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And, and maintenance also, because of the-
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, because of the work that they did, going right in the-
Cleaning.
Cleaning, going right in the middle of all of it. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and other board members. First of all, I want to thank all the employees that showed up here tonight, and it shows that they're excited or hopefully optimistic about what will come out of this, and also, I don't think we had this many during my swearing-in here. There's a huge number. But we, with the sheriff's office-
You know, they say money talks.
Exactly. We at the sheriff's office, we agree with the budget, except for two additional requests. And the first one is the reclassification of our fleet maintenance major, maintenance corporal. Prior to establishing the fleet maintenance facility, the civil captain traditionally managed the sheriff's office fleet. In addition to the supervisory responsibilities of civil, the captain was responsible for ordering new vehicles, scheduling vehicle equipment installs, writing vehicle maintenance work orders, managing vehicle repairs, assigning vehicles, and auctioning vehicles that had reached the end of their service. The fleet was managed from an observational point of view and therefore not properly documented, wasn't effective nor efficient. When fleet maintenance was established, the existing special equipment corporal was assigned additional responsibilities of maintaining and servicing vehicles, as well as several of the management responsibilities to increase accountability, improve fleet management, and establish maintenance records on each vehicle. The fleet maintenance corporal is now responsible for managing vendors and keeping inventory, holding deputies responsible for the condition of their vehicles, supervising part-time employees and volunteers assigned to the fleet, the safety of every vehicle, over $7 million worth of counting assets, a supply budget exceeding $800,000, cleaning and maintaining the fleet maintenance building and scheduling repairs, OSHA compliance, equipment maintenance, repairs and calibrations, overseas repairs to those vehicles involved in collisions, maintains records, and oversees preventing maintenance scheduling, scheduling parts. In addition to those responsibilities, the corporal works flexible hours, coming in at 5:30 a.m. This allows our shifts, when they change, to go ahead and get their work done prior to either going home or going to work. This is a downtime during the county time period, and this has really enabled us to reduce our response times quite significantly. The corporal was also on call and often responds after business hours to maintain the fleet and prevent vehicles from having to be towed in for service. The corporal reports directly to the administrative major and operates fleet maintenance without direct supervision. Fleet maintenance has returned nearly $228,000 from the automotive supply budget in the past budget two years. Due to the additional job duties, supervisory responsibilities, and accountability is requested that the corporal's position be reclassified to a lieutenant. The total cost of this reclassification is $8,580, including fringe benefits. The second request is a salary increase for patrol deputies and detention officers. Labor costs will always account approximately 70% of our budget. Our labor costs based on our salaries are roughly $22 per hour, based on our salary. As much as I hope to keep that number as low as possible, we must look at increasing our labor costs to retain employees. When I was looking for a career in the mid-'80s, I looked at law enforcement as an honorable career. I looked up to those friends who had already chosen that law enforcement profession, but today, that type of career is not portrayed that way. Today's media and many left-wing politicians have destroyed the reputation of law enforcement entities around the nation. We've seen an enormous decline in applicants here in Randolph County, and I feel like it was due to some of that. I feel like the trend will continue for a while longer, which will make it extremely hard to recruit suitable applicants. The current state of law enforcement has declined over the last four years due to many movements across America, as I said. We watch the riots live each day with the police scrutinized on many of the news outlets. There's talk and even actions by community and state leaders to defund the police, and I am so glad I live in Randolph County, where that will never, ever happen. Recruitment and retention. Neighborhood sheriffs are seeking substantial pay increases for deputies and detention officers to increase recruiting and retain members. Based on our tax revenue, it is understandable that Randolph County Sheriff's Office pay is slightly less than all surrounding counties. The sheriff's job is to offset that with good leadership and create a pleasant, positive work environment. However, as inflation continues to rise and surrounding counties substantially increase pay, leadership cannot pay the bills for deputies. They are and will be forced to seek higher pay from another agency. The members of the sheriff's office are truly grateful for a 5% cost of living allowance. However, an additional 5% salary increase at a minimum will hopefully keep Randolph County Sheriff's Office competitive in recruitment and to ensure the retention of deputies and officers in whom we have already trained, educated, and invested in. As of June 1, 2022, the Randolph County Sheriff's Office has 19 openings. We have three patrol and 16 detention. Surrounding sheriff's offices such as Davidson, Chatham, Montgomery, Rowan, and Stanley Counties have a higher starting base pay than Randolph County, with the exception of detention officer pay in Montgomery County and Alamance County. Those counties are seeking substantial pay increases. Examples include Alamance, Sheriff Johnson's requesting $8,000 increase for deputies and $1,000 for detention officers. That will keep them at one pay rate. The raise is equal to about a 25% raise for his deputies. Davidson, Sheriff Simmons, is asking 12% for his deputies and detention officers. And there's four deputies that have left since April for higher-paying jobs, and several others have recently taken on part jobs, part-time jobs, just to make ends meet here. The next one slide, it shows our pay, deputy sheriff base pay and detention officer base pay. As I said earlier, Alamance and Montgomery County are the only two counties listed on this sheet here with a little bit more of an increase, or decrease, I'm sorry. And I've got Montgomery County, Alamance, Chatham, Davidson, Stanley, and Rowan County. The base pay for Montgomery County is $39,000, and detention center is $35,388, which we are a little bit above. Alamance County, deputy sheriff pay, starting pay is $36,663, and he had to increase the detention center pay some time ago due to a huge shortage in their detention center. So he bumped it up to $44,663. Chatham County is $4,300, and detention is $38,382. Davidson County is $41,000 for deputy sheriff and $39,500 for detention center. Stanley County, $41,300 and $41,300, and Rowan County is $43,188 and $43,188. Like to add, Montgomery County, their base pay is actually more than ours on deputy sheriff, and they only have a population of 23,000 people in Montgomery County. We have a population six times that, with 143,000 plus. We have a population six times that with 143,000 plus. Retention issues. Our salaries are lower starting out compared to other neighboring sheriff's offices and police departments. I talked to Chief Limeberry today, and they're getting practically a two-step raise, which equals to about 14%. No longevity pay program, as Jill mentioned earlier. And this is to reward tenure. No shift premium pay for members who work late shift, third shift. After two years of service, we really can't increase the pay of a deputy if he chooses not to get in the promotional system. That would be the only way he would get a raise, if he got promoted, other than the merits. He would max out after two years. Projected growth preparing for the future. There have been approximately 2,000 permits issued for homes, condos, and other housing in the Archdale and Trinity area. And the Toyota Battery Plan is expected to employ nearly 10,000 individuals in the future, whenever it's totally complete. Randolph County is therefore expected to grow exponentially in the next three years. As this growth occurs, more calls for service and more opportunities for criminal activity are expected. The sheriff's office is in the process of negotiating a contract for three additional deputy positions with the city of Trinity in preparation of that projected growth. Our office must prepare now for those demands on law enforcement. Randolph County is changing, and it is my responsibility to prepare for those changes. In the past year, our office has lost 37 employees. Those members accounted for a combined total of nearly 100 hours of experience that is working somewhere else. The majority of those left for higher salaries with neighboring departments. I am concerned with our ability to compete with other departments because our salaries are already lower. It is therefore imperative that we, as a county, do everything we can to retain these officers that we have and attract new recruits with competitive salaries and benefits. I therefore implore of you to seriously and prayerfully consider the request for an overall 10% pay increase for deputies and detention officers. If the cost analysis of the 5% additional would equal to about $843,213, and that includes benefits. I appreciate your time in this manner. I understand that you must make budget decisions for every department, county, government. I assure you that I'm doing my part to make your choices less burdensome. As a sheriff of this county for the past three and a half years, I've been a good steward of taxpayer dollar. My administration has sought ways to generate revenue and save money. As I've said many times before, we will always look after the best interest of our citizens while making decisions about money. This year's concerns are more significant than my past three years dealing with a budget. I can see a problem that will ultimately affect our citizens if we do not act. I will cooperate with any decision that you all make, and I will work with each one of you to find a solution to this matter at hand. Our efforts have shown improvement each of the last three years. I hope and pray this concern I have about the retaining the needed members can be solved so we can continue serving our citizens more effectively. Thank you once again for all you do, your service. And I do have one additional request. If you'll give Deputy Scarborough, who approached my office just two, three days ago and submitted his resignation, I would like for you to hear what he has to say, if it's okay.
Sure. Before he comes, do you, is everybody that you hire BLE certified? Or you hire and then give them a time to become certified?
Our detention officers are not certified. We, if they're in school, we will work with them and try to sign them up for Randolph County Sheriff's Office before someone else gets that opportunity. And when we do, you know, the retention will last sometimes five, well, four years. Other times, it may last a month. Some of the members that are applying are not your typical law enforcement members you would see back in, when I took, back in 1985, when I took the plunge into law enforcement. That's why I say it's changed. It's not as, I guess, hum, it's not as a noble profession as it once was. And I credit that to the negative that we see on TV and, you know, sad. It's something that we'll always need, and we never have enough.
Are any of these detention positions due to the jail expansion, or are you okay with that?
Yes, sir. We, we have filled some, and some of the members that we filled with those positions have left due to the hours. It's so short down there now that you have one person that may have just been hired, and normally, they would not have the job and duties that they have. But with it being so short, they're having to work very hard on other duties to keep up. And normally, in a, if all positions were filled, they wouldn't have all those duties to perform. But they're requested to do that now since we're short. Any other questions for me?
This, this might be, looking at the budget document, there's a contingency in there. Is that 506, is that under sheriff's budget? Is that the additional 5% or?
The 500,000 in contingency is the merit for all the public safety that we've been allocating out.
So that, how much is the additional? I guess it'd be another 500,000.
It was eight.
If that's the, I mean, that's been divided among four agencies.
I'm, I'm asking the additional 5% over above.
The additional 5%, was, I want to say eight, 78.
Eight, eight forty-three, was that the number?
Eight forty-two. Yeah, it's eight forty-three, two thirteen.
Other questions, comments?
Is that it, David?
Yeah. That's wonderful.
I just wanted to ask just a, just, just for not, just for knowledge's sake. So, when you get employees, are they all, like, whether it's detention center staff or whether it's deputies, are they trained through RCC? Is there some other training? You talked about training for detention center, so is?
Yes.
What's out there?
Some are attending BLET, or they have an interest in law enforcement, getting into the basic law enforcement program. And we will sponsor them. And, you know, we'll go over there and shadow them and, you know, communicate as to getting them to commit to the Randolph County Sheriff's Office. That's where we have a problem in recruiting with our salary. It's all about money to some of them. It's not about working in their home county. With the recent situation in Greensboro with the police officer, I feel like we may get some certified, experienced officers in Randolph County in the near future. And we have gained a lot of that experience with two or three from Greensboro that came down during the COVID crisis, and it was about vaccinations. And they were going to be mandated to take a vaccination, and they refused. So, we try to take it, take every, use every advantage we have to get these experienced members to come here.
Can you put a non-certified officer on patrol?
You can, but I wouldn't, I'm not doing it. But some sheriffs do, and you have a year to have them certified. But this day and time, the civil liability is just too much.
I have one question. You hear on TV that the Oxford County's short so many in, in the, in the jail. Davidson's short so many. How many are you short?
We're short 16 in the detention center and three on patrol. And we, we're going out recruiting, where, you know, restaurants. I'll go into a restaurant, if I see someone that looks like they know what hard work is, I'll, I'll talk to them and, you know, give them the story about benefits and hopefully get a few from restaurants. I've taken every hint that other sheriffs have given me in order to get good people here. And that's what we want. We want good, experienced people. Any other questions for either of us? If I, if you would, take a moment, listen to Deputy Scarborough.
Good evening. Unfortunately, since January of this year, I've had to start making some choices of my own due to the cost of living going up and up. This job has never been about money. It's been about the pride that I get when I put this uniform on and I'm able to go serve the community. Unfortunately, with everything going on and the cost of living continuing to rise, I have had to take another position where I will make more money and bill to provide.
It's not, it's not in law enforcement?
No, sir, it is not. It has been a very hard decision for me to make. I'm going to miss this immensely. Sheriff has given me a great job, and it's been an honor to serve the people of this county. But unfortunately, when you're having to dig into a savings as a young male that's wishing to buy a house by the time that he is 30, had, you know, a nice sum of money, you know, set aside for that fact, and now at every paycheck, you're having to dig into that money just to pay this bill or pay this bill. It makes it to where you're no longer able to do it, and you have to go look for something that will give you that.
Are you married an officer?
No, sir.
And when, when you're leaving, when'd you?
My last shift with the county will be Sunday.
But when?
My last shift will be Sunday, and then I will come in during day shift on Wednesday.
How long have you been with us?
I've been with us since September the 1st of last year. I had prior experience on the road at another agency before I came here. I came here because of the small-town feel that made me feel like I was back at home. And I can tell you that everybody in leadership positions here, they make you feel like that.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
And if you don't like where you are, please come back.
I, I hope to do that very soon in the future. Like I said, this has been a very hard decision, and I love this job. There's many deputies here that they're able to work, you know, two jobs and, you know, decrease that time that they have with their family. And it's a shame at this point.
All right. Thank you all.
I want to thank you all again for taking time to listen to us. Appreciate it and consider it.
Thank you very much. I'm sure keeping with this theme, Donovan, you're up.
It's going to be an echo of what the sheriff just said. And unfortunately, what the deputy just said is where we find ourselves with our employees as well. They all work two or more jobs in EMS and 911. When you talk about local government and the responsibilities of local government, here it is. This is local government that goes into homes that are not so nice, that you come out with fleas and bedbugs. You see things that you only would dream about in movies or nightmares. And the jobs these people do keep the county running. They protect and serve and do the best they can to minimize loss of life, damage to property, and so on. We find ourselves in the exact same spot. Cost of living increases and what, versus what we pay our employees for the jobs that they do is not sustainable anymore. Jared is going to present the statistics that you've heard from the sheriff and more on the statistics you've heard from Jill already about our turnover, why people are leaving, where they're going. And it's not, we're competing with private sector like we have never competed before for employees. And the reason, I think, is longevity. They're guaranteed to go up so much in their salaries for their tenure and things like that. So Jared's going to present that, and then I'll have some other comments.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening, Jared.
Normally, when you hear from me, I'm here to warn you about a tornado warning or severe thunderstorm warnings. Commissioner Allen knows.
Thank you for that.
But, but tonight, I'm not here to talk about weather. But I am here to tell you about something that's occurring now, and it's just as severe. And frankly, it's something that has me more concerned than any weather event we have faced in my 16 years here in Randolph County. But that's the status of our workforce. I put this graph together to, that's on your screen, to show you the number of employees who have left their position with our department in the last three and a half years. I think it's interesting to note that in the first two years of this graph, we never had more than six people to leave our department in any given month. But in the last year and a half, it's not uncommon to lose eight people. In July 2021, we lost 13. As you can see.
Was there a reason, was that COVID-related or what?
A lot of that was, we purged our part-time list of employees that had maybe gone to part-time, and then they just slowly stopped working. So, so some of those numbers, we just removed them off of our roster. But we, we lost them nonetheless. So, you can, as you can see, though, the trend of people leaving our department have been increasing. As of last week, we had a total of 12 full-time vacancies between EMS and 911. Seven of those are in EMS, which is an 8% vacancy rate. And five of those are in 911, which is a 17% vacancy rate. Only one, only one person, or one person in 911 is still in training. So essentially, they're working at only 80% of the normal staff. We've been working hard to replace the staff. This graph shows the number of new employees hired into our department by month over the last three and a half years. I think it's interesting to note that pre-COVID, we only had to hire a few months out of the year. However, recently, we've been trying to hire someone every month to get caught back up. A huge challenge to the hiring process is that our staff that's normally responsible for hiring and training new employees are doing the job of our frontline employees because of our shortages. For example, for example, in our 911 division, Major Kena Heaton and Captain Allen King are typically responsible for hiring and onboarding new employees. However, in the last month, they have both permanently moved to fill two critically short night shift positions in the 911 center. In a best-case scenario, they'll be there for six months. It's extremely difficult for our leaders in the 911 division to participate in interviews, onboarding, and training, and do their normal administrative jobs like making 911 recordings for the media and our partner agencies when they're working 40 to 60 hours at night. But despite our attempts to increase hiring, we're making little progress. This year to date, we have hired 17 new employees. However, 17 existing employees have resigned their position. As of today, June 9th, we've already had three resignations this month. So despite hiring 17 new employees, we've gotten no closer to filling any of our 12 full-time vacancies. We know a labor shortage is affecting many of the departments that are making presentations tonight. But one huge challenge our department is facing is despite many days working with fewer employees per shift, our call volume and our workload is higher than we've ever seen it. This graph shows the cumulative number of EMS calls in Randolph County for each of the last five years. During 2021, which is indicated by the brown line on the graph, we ran more EMS calls than ever before. The call volume we were facing last year put stress on the entire medical system, both at the EMS and hospital levels, as you are aware. However, as you can see by the red line, our 2022 EMS volume is on course to shatter the record of last year. Already by the end of last month, we have ran 1,871 more medical calls above our five-year average. I know it's hard to grasp that additional workload, so I'll try to quantify it. On average, it takes us 58 minutes to handle an EMS call from the time it's dispatched until the ambulance is available for the next call. For my example, if we brought on an additional ambulance today just to handle the additional 1,871 calls we've seen this year, it would take an it would take an ambulance working seventy-five straight days, nonstop, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to respond and handle just the additional calls that we've seen above our average. That doesn't count our normal call volume. That's seventy-five less days throughout our service that an ambulance has been available to run emergency calls. That volume would stress any agency, much less one that is working with ninety percent of its normal staff in EMS. Just Monday of this week, around 2:00 PM, all eleven of the ambulances in Randolph County, our nine and the two franchise ambulances from Ashburn and Piedmont Triad, were assigned to medical calls at the exact same time. For a period of about twenty-five minutes, around two o'clock, had there been a car wreck or another medical emergency in the county, there would not have been an ambulance to respond. We would have had to call an outside county. They're in the same position. So we call them and they say, "We don't have the ambulances to respond." Looking back at the 911 division again, 911 does so many tasks, it's really hard to quantify everything that they do. So this graph only shows the number of telephone numbers made to and from our 911 center. As you can see, in 2022, it's running right up there as one of the busiest years we have ever seen. Our staff have answered just under 100,000 telephone calls as of May 30th. That's 3,344 calls above our five-year average at this time of the year. So I'll try to quantify that again. If we hired a staff member to answer the telephone, and they could do it in four minutes, pick up the phone, take the information, put it in the computer, dispatch it, and hang up, it would take somebody working eight hours a day, nonstop, without breaks, more than twenty-eight straight days just to answer the additional calls that we have seen so far this year. And our staff is doing that in the 911 center at eighty percent of their normal staffing. The inability to keep up with our workload is appearing in our statistics. For the first time that I'm aware, we are beginning to fall below our standard of having ninety percent of the 911 calls answered within ten seconds, which is the state requirement. I think the last time I looked, we were down to about eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent. We've had enough good employees leave over the past year that we've been able to identify themes of why people are turning in their resignations. And they're a little bit different for each of the divisions. For 911, it's simple. The theme is that employees are extremely stressed and the workload quickly becomes unbearable. Many have taken higher hourly pay jobs in industries that are looking for similar skill sets that offer less stress. We have lost three supervisors and two telecommunications so far this year. We've lost a hundred and forty years of combined Randolph County 911 experience in the last three years. National 911 staffing models recommend that we should hire twelve people per shift answering emergency calls based on Randolph County data. We're currently running five to seven people per shift, depending on the day. In this budget year, we're asking for an additional eight employees. Having eight employees would allow us to put two on each of our four shifts. This would bring us to a total of nine per shift if we can get back to full staffing levels. Every week, we have staff working seventeen-hour shifts just to keep the 911 center staff to minimum levels. Some are working from 7:00 AM to midnight, are going home to get four hours of sleep just to turn around to be back at seven o'clock the next morning and work their twelve-hour shift. We have some doing that today. If it weren't for them, the work would not be done. Our staff have been amazing at bending over backwards, altering their schedules, and changing their lives around to work when there's staffing shortages because they care about their county and the county citizens. But we know that many of the staff that have stuck with us are burned out. They're tired and they're frustrated. They have been sacrificing for us for nearly two years. If we can't give them the reinforcements and help that they need as soon as possible, my fear is that we're going to lose more staff and emergency calls are going to be delayed. Even if this board was to approve us eight positions tonight, it would take us four to five months of training until they were actually functional. We cannot afford to lose anyone else in the 911 division. This slide is a summary of what I'd previously mentioned about our increases in EMS call volume. If our call volume remains as high as we have seen it, we will need to add more staff and ambulances next year. In fact, we would have requested more EMS employees this year if we thought we would have been able to staff them, but we can't staff the trucks that we currently have in service. As I mentioned, the common themes for why employees are leaving in our EMS division is a little bit different. We've lost a lot of staff who will be leaving or have left because they've completed nursing school. Some others have gone to urgent cares, hospital-based systems, or the private sector who have just begun recruiting paramedics. As you can see by this slide, paramedics have lost a lot or have a lot of clinical skills that are valuable to hospitals. With the same amount of education, which is about a two-year program, paramedic can increase their hourly rate by $10 an hour in a hospital setting. In our current pay plan, a longtime, experienced frontline paramedic working in our agency would rarely make more than $24 an hour. They could start today at Randolph Hospital right out of nursing school for twenty-eight, significantly less than a new graduate nurse. Of course, we're not the only agency facing these problems. Call around any county around us and they will tell you the same thing. This is the highlighted topics of every seminar or conference I have been to in the last year. Counties are determined that in order to survive, they must compete. Every single news article on this slide is from a North Carolina county published in the last eight months. Many counties are competing with dollars. I have never seen recruiting for public safety as competitive as it has been recently. I was surprised to find when I attended a training at a statewide EMS conference in Greensboro a few months ago that scattered among the many vendors booths that were selling their products, there were county EMS agencies recruiting for employees. This is a conference where counties send their employees to get training, and there's other counties there trying to scoop them up. They were offering brochures trying to lure EMS providers to their agency with recently approved pay increases. Cone Health just recently gave us a heads up that they're considering adding paramedics to their emergency rooms as a cost-saving measure. As I mentioned, traditionally, paramedics cost less per hour than nurses, but they offer many of the same clinical skills. This will further shallow the pool of available paramedics. If you remember, in October of last year, this board authorized us to offer eight new paramedics a $4,500 sign-on bonus to come to work for Randolph County. Since your approval in October, we've only been able to offer it to four employees. We've just not had the applicants. Like I mentioned, our call volume, we really need to add more ambulances today, but first, we have to be able to recruit and retain the staff that we have. Next year, we would like to add ambulances where we already have space for them in the Archdale and Randleman areas, but we have to fix our staffing issue first. Right behind our 911 and EMS divisions is our technical service division that is the next area we need to add staff. Each year, there are more and more devices and technology that we add to our department to do our jobs, and the two employees in the tech services division work extremely hard to keep things operational despite more and more projects that we add to the plate. As our department continues to grow, we need to grow this division to support our staff and the equipment. As I finish my portion of the presentation, I want to highlight what we think is the best approach to fixing some of the biggest problems that we have faced in the last decade. I wish there was a single fix, but unfortunately, I think we have to address several things consecutively. Commissioners, our staff are very weary. You can see it in their faces. They are physically and mentally exhausted. They have been digging in their heels for the better part of two years. Each pay period, I find myself signing time sheets of employees who have put in seventy-hour work weeks. They are sacrificing family events, canceling vacations, missing their kids' ballgames, and sacrificing their health to come work and be busier than they've ever been before. It's not sustainable. We're already seeing proof of that. Good, long-time Randolph County employees are burning out faster than we can replace them. Each month, they look over to the chair beside them and wonder who will be the next to go. It's a snowball effect that's quickly turning into an avalanche for our department. We have to add positions to relieve their workload. We also have to be able to recruit employees to fill our existing vacancies by offering some sort of incentives, or we're going to continue to struggle to bring staff in the door. We've tossed around ideas such as night shift pay differentials like hospitals offer their staff to recruit employees to our typically less desirable nighttime shifts. And finally, we have to remain salary competitive with our neighbors in the private sector. No one goes into a public safety career because they expect to get wealthy. They do it because they have a burning desire to help and comfort others on their worst days. But we have to remain competitive with our surrounding agencies or our staff will continue leaving to go help somewhere else.
Jared, may I ask a question, Donovan? Jared, before you leave, you talked about the number of people needed in the 911 center. What kind of, what are you talking about in terms of training there? I know I was in there one day and a young woman was finishing up some education, but what kind of timeframe are you looking at in training and who does that training?
So normally, we try to hire and we do a classroom portion. We'll do three or four weeks of classroom portion to try to go through our policies, how to enter stuff, how to use the software that we use.
So that's our stat, you guys?
Yes, yes, we're doing that. Normally, it's like I said, the major and the captain of that department that are running that. But recently, probably with the next group that we hire, it'll be myself and Christie, who came from the 911 division previously to train those people because they're working their night shifts. But once they come into the room and sit down, they have to learn the fire position. They have to learn the EMS position, the sheriff, Ashborough PD, you know, all the systems that they have to use, how to take medical calls. It's a lot, so it usually takes anywhere from four to six months to get them to function by themselves.
So just a couple more slides. Just as a refresher for you and the public, my department has five primary divisions: 911, EMS, emergency management, the Fire Marshal's Office, and technical services. Within EMS, we have our training division and we also have the morgue. We took that on in 2018, and each year, the number of decedents we see in the morgue has increased by twenty-five percent. I want to point out that when Jared talks about our shift supervisors and our managers in these divisions working in the 911 center, so are we. I worked the other Sunday. Jared just finished almost a full night shift the other night. We're going in there as well, so we're doing that job. Since 2018, I've also taken on basically the role of managing the morgue. I have assistants with Christie in the back, helps us sometimes when she's available, and our logistics coordinator, but there's no one dedicated to the morgue. Since we opened it in March of 2018, we've had over eight hundred and forty-seven decedents. It's increasing every year. We've had a hundred and twenty-three so far since January of this year, not included in that number. So when we deal with the decedents, it's highly stressful and emotional time for the families that we're dealing with. Oftentimes, we have them because they can't afford to bury or cremate them, which means that's a ten-day hold, and then thank goodness for Tracy Murphy and Wendy Emerson at DSS, who then helps us to try to find ways to resolve the situation. But there's a lot of communication between law enforcement, the state medical examiner, the local medical examiner, the funeral and cremation services, the transport services, because these decedents have to be transported from Ashburn to Raleigh and back, and then onto the funeral service. So this is in addition, you know, that we don't have anybody dedicated to manage that system that's ever increasingly busy. So that is also one of the requests that we had in our budget. The other is the assistant director, and that's so that we have somebody dedicated to focus on the regulatory requirements that often change and sometimes we don't know about until after the fact because we're busy doing other things, as I just mentioned, responding to calls or working in other areas. But this person would be responsible for the overall policy administration, quality management, and those types of things. That's not a high-priority position, but it would be greatly helpful and is needed. Just as a reminder, these are the positions we've requested over the last four or five budget years. Included in the county manager's proposed budget is the assistant shift supervisors if the sales tax has worked out to the five percent. If you decide that, then those are included, and that would be four additional positions. We also need, as Jared said, a total of eight, so another four telecommunications. For the past four years now, concluding this year, we've requested the technical person. We're no longer requesting the housekeeper because maintenance contracted with a new service that's doing pretty good. The assistant director, this is our history, and unfortunately, we're only going to get busier. The demand for service is only going to increase. So we're going to get further and further behind if we're not allowed to address some of these needs as we move forward. That's the summary of the requests. Again, the four assistant shift supervisors is included in the county manager's proposed budgets and two ambulances, but we need an additional two to help our fleet stay in cycle with our rotation. Almost every year, we only ask for two replacements of the ambulances, but we do find ourselves at a point where we need four to kind of get us over so that we can continue in the future years only asking for two, just the way the cyclic rotation has worked out.
That's two in addition to the two that is in the budget, right?
Two in addition that are in the county manager's proposed budget. Again, but that's pending on the sales tax that you decide on. Ambulance has gone up significantly, so a total of four is going to be 1.2 million. But that does include most everything that we need on the ambulance. These are the priorities, which are also on the memo that I provided to you just to help you remember as you're digging through all the department budgets between now and the time we adopt. But the three highlighted are our most critical. But we still, nonetheless, need the positions also listed. Also, just as, before I ask if you have any questions or make any further comments, we're going to come to you in September to officially and finally ask for you to adopt a fire inspection fee. We're one of only a very small handful of counties that don't have fire inspection fees or follow-up fees to help with our violators. So we're not going to bring that to you until September because we're waiting on a couple of building code changes that will affect that. But I did want you just to be aware of it and have a heads up. We've talked about it in the past, and something's always come up that's delayed us from doing that. Again, I want to echo what Jill and the sheriff have already said about our merit increases. You know, they've always been limited. So what we find is a part of the theme is county employees expect the cost of living because that's what it is. Its cost of living has gone up. It's to help us pay our bills. But they don't feel rewarded for any type of tenure because we only reward two percent or less of the total nine hundred employees each year. So if you're only awarding your top performers, what happens to the other eighty percent in your department? They never or rarely see an increase because of their performance. It's very difficult to balance when you have a hundred and eighty-eight employees in your department and less than 10,000 each year to try to do that. So we do try to balance it the best that we can to issue those awards. I don't have any other comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So sheriff was specific in his request, but I don't, you haven't been as that specific?
It's listed on your memo.
Were you taking with him, I mean, that same addition?
For the five percent? No, I had not requested that, but I would not argue with that. I mean, really, that's what it's going to, honestly, again, so Buncombe County was one of the last things that popped up on your slide that had all the different news articles. They've just increased their paramedic starting pay to $73,000. So that's where we're headed. That's the reality. Because you also saw, if you go back and look at Jared's slide where it talks about what a paramedic can do, nurses can't do these skills. That's why hospitals now are eating up paramedics in the emergency room because nurses are not allowed to innovate without direct visual supervision of a doctor. Now, they can take certifications to become certified beyond the basic registered nurse to be able to do innovations, but they will get paid a dollar more per hour. Everything a nurse does of adding things, then they're going to get a little bit more. Shift differentials, you know, all types of things. But these things, this is basically a doctor on wheels today. They can innovate. They can start IVs. They can drill into the bone to provide IV access, to provide medications and normal saline. Most nurses have to take a specialized course in order to interpret a twelve-lead EKG. Our paramedics do that from day one. Delivering any types of medications via muscle, nasal, whatever it is. They can deliver babies. You know, usually, it's one paramedic with an EMT and hopefully a few firefighters to help them, but we've delivered several babies this year. The last one was in a living room. They don't have any doctors or techs or any of these other folks. You walk into an ED room and you've got five or six or seven people all with a specific job. But a paramedic's out there by themselves as the lead medical person. Now, like I said, we have support from our firefighters and the EMTs that we employ. But, you know, if you look at what these do, starting at $18 an hour, and compare it to what, you know, the next closest thing would be a registered nurse, there's a great difference between the skills. And so hospitals are, my cousin was a paramedic in Forsyth County. He's now a paramedic at Baptist ED, making more money. And he does all of these clinical skills because the nurses can't. So there's a big disparity between that and the medical field itself. And I think that's why you're going to see big jumps across the nation.
You're certainly supporting the five percent that's in the budget, but your focus is on these additional positions to handle the volume and workload that you've got.
Absolutely. Yes. Yes. But, I mean, you know, the way cost of living inflation is, I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't argue with the five percent.
I understand. Question?
What are we doing to? The pool is getting smaller as far as paramedics go.
The pool is getting smaller as far as paramedics go. What are we doing to? I guess, is the increase in pay, is that going to lure more people to go into that field or?
That's our hope. I do have 11 paramedic or EMTs that currently work for us that are in the paramedic program at Randolph Community College. And we feel pretty comfortable that they are going to succeed, but.
How long will that take?
It's two years, nearly two years from start to beginning. There's a lot of prereq.
That's for their associate degree process.
Yeah, the state now will require a two-year degree, which is the same as a registered nurse. It's not in effect yet, they postponed the actual requirement, but it is going to be a requirement, I think in 2023, that it's a two-year degree. So a lot of our paramedics have a two-year degree because of the program. You know, you can go to Randolph Community College, which offers a certificate program, or you can go to Guilford Technical and get an actual associate's degree. But it is headed to an associate degree requirement for that. There are no pre, there are no classes that you can take to become a telecommunicator. A lot of that is just skill-based. Can you do multitasking? You know, they're still classified on the federal and state levels as clerical positions, and they are far from clerical. The better titles for a telecommunicator is crisis manager, resource manager, crisis interventionist, you know, multitask master because of the multiple things they have to do at one time. We've recently had to ask the sheriff to ask his folks to do a little bit more on their own and not ask as much of us. And thankfully, they're working with us, and we've seen a significant difference. But we're so overwhelmed with telephone and radio requests that we've had to ask them to cut back a little bit. But it is services we should be providing them, but we just can't right now. And I will have to look at cutting additional services in nine one one if we can't get our numbers back up. We're working on a plan that if we could hire 10 people, how can we get them trained and?
I tried to recruit. My granddaughter just graduated from, got her doctorate in physical therapy, and her husband is a paramedic. But they went to Birmingham, Alabama.
Well, it's hot and more humid down there, what were they thinking? Yeah, and so, you know, thankfully, this board made one of the best changes in probably the history of EMS, going from 24 to 12-hour shifts. And when we did that, that put us actually the highest paid aside from Guilford in the immediate Piedmont tribe. But now, we're back down to comparable or below what these other counties are currently doing. So it's just a revolving game. But very proud of my staff and the thing, you know, I started out by talking about, you know, we go in the best homes, the nicest homes, and we also go in the worst homes, and you know, why do you do that? You don't do it to get rich. Nobody's looking to get rich, but they're looking to be comfortable and be able to do what they need to do to live. So appreciate your time. Any other questions?
Any other question, comments?
I've got a couple of clarifications I'd like to make sure that I understand. Down under capital request outside the county manager's proposed budget, that's, you're saying that you really need two more additional replacement ambulances on top of?
The two.
The two that's already in?
Correct.
The request, so it's 600,000 we're looking at for?
Total, if you approved all four, it would be 1.2?
1.2 million.
Yes.
For all four.
300 each.
Okay. That's, yeah, I need that clarification. And what I'm hearing you say is that you don't have enough personnel. Hard to get more personnel, hard to keep personnel. Now, last year, we went through the process of going from a 24-hour timeframe to a 12-hour shift, thank you.
Right.
And of course, that cost us a lot more to do that. And I think what I'm hearing you say is that that really, it might retain some folks, but it really didn't solve our problem.
Not like we thought, not like we thought it would.
So what we got now is?
But, not to interrupt you, but I can tell you the difference we've seen in the employees that have stuck it out in EMS because of that 12-hour difference has been incredible.
So it's really, you're competing with other counties?
Oh, absolutely, and the hospitals and the private sector.
And there's not enough people coming into the business per se?
Right.
To handle this, so what it's going to take is, well, again, I guess, where are we going to get all these critical position people?
Nine One One will be easier to hire for because we do the in-house training, although it's prolonged. It's going to, as Jared said, it's going to take four to six months to get them trained. But there are people available that have the skill sets that we can do that. So we just need the positions approved in order to advertise and bring them in. EMS is more difficult because the pool for paramedics across the state is short because they're choosing to go to these other places. For nine one one, an example is, he mentioned that one of our supervisors turned in their resignation and left. They went to work at a furniture call center, starting at $23 an hour with guaranteed, and this is according to them, I don't have any proof of it, but this is what they told us, 23 an hour, obviously less stress, a better shift, and they have a longevity plan and good benefits. He'd been here five years and was making, at standard, $21, or just at $21. And the only time he would go up above that 12 is if we can give him a merit or if cost of living. So they get stuck, and then you have compression. We've got employees that have been there 28 years that are making maybe 50 cents more than somebody who's just started once they get to standard at step 12. So there's lots of, lots of things. No quick fix.
Right. Yeah, I think I see that there's no quick fix.
This is my funeral home question, but where were all those bodies when we didn't have them work?
At the hospital, bless them, for 50 or more years, they did it for us. And, you know, I think with overdoses and the hard times, people, you heard about the two pediatrics that died in the wreck. We had them for the full 10 days because the family could not afford right away to do it. Fortunately, they did get it worked out, we, you know, we worked with them. But it's more and more, we're keeping them for 10 days.
And we're still getting opioid deaths, and we're still getting suicides.
Absolutely, yeah, oh, absolutely. That's the majority of what we get in the morgue. Pardon?
I've had three this week.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Three overdoses.
Yeah, it's still very much an opioid epidemic and other things. It's not just heroin, it's all kinds, you know, they're mixing it with everything now.
Other question, comment?
One more question, excuse me, you know, I don't know. But the, talking about the opioid epidemic and everything, are you seeing that, and you hear it on the news that you got more and more of this drugs stuff coming across the border and all that, yes, are you seeing an uptick on that kind of activity?
That's probably more of a sheriff question as far as what's coming in. That's all I see is what dies and what's almost dead. So we're, our numbers have been kind of steady as far as, a little bit of an uptick on the number of overdose calls we're running, and the deaths have been pretty steady. But as far as like, you know, what's coming in and what's spreading around, that's, I'm sure, more of a question for the sheriff. Our numbers have kind of stayed steady, though. Do you have a question?
All right.
I guess it's back to the first slide. So what are the, how short are we, like sheriff had real specifics of how short he was in detention center on patrol. How short are we in nine one one?
So currently, nine one one, we have five full-time vacancies and I think it's seven part-time. In EMS, we have nine full-time vacancies. And as Jared mentioned, every once in a while, we have to go and clean out our part-time roster because they just stopped working. They have full-time commitments elsewhere, so we've just done that. So I think I've got 12, 12 or 13 vacancies in EMS. Anything else? Sorry to take up too much time, but here we are.
Social Services, Tracy? Sheriff, Greg, those, all those salary numbers you gave us, those are, that's before any budgets are passed and changes are made, right?
Yes, brood compared those. Well, with Alamance County.
Okay.
You know, they're the 8,000?
Right.
Dollar amount.
So on the slide, it actually showed what their new salary is going to be. So what their deputies are actually making $8,000 less than their detention officers right now. So the salary that got put on there was actually what they're asking for.
Okay, for Alamance County?
Well, no, the slide shows the current.
Well, the one they got, because they didn't get the updated one.
I'd have to look at your slide.
All right.
We did make some changes to that. I wanted you to see the current salary of each either deputy or detention officer at the listed county government.
Okay, thanks.
There you go. And that's it.
So that's about the, that was the original one that we submitted, and we were vetting all of our information again and realized that.
Alamance County is incorrect there.
Okay.
Correct, correct.
Good, thank y'all. Tracy? Tracy, did you come back from vacation just for tonight?
Of course I did, what vacation? Good evening. Another year has passed, and we are here before you again for another budget. And Department of Social Services is certainly experiencing some of the same pain points that our colleagues are experiencing this year. When we talk about budget each year, I try my best to bring attention to our primary pain points that we have during the year with an eye looking to envision what's coming up so that we will know what the next big thing is going to be, and we can pivot that way. This year, we've had challenges, as we always have, challenges with child welfare, challenges with workforce development, as my other colleagues have mentioned. And we focused on the pain point of assisting our legal team and standing up to the pressures of our statutory legal responsibilities. Before I get more into our pain points this year and what our vision is, I want you to see the team members who are responsible for the hard work that we'll spend just a few minutes discussing this evening. Department of Social Services is here, we support the community, and we support each other. And I'd like them to please stand so they can be recognized. And there's Patrick up there. Thank you, guys. I always want to say publicly how much I appreciate the very difficult work that they do. I believe we also have one of our board members, Mr. Lassiter, here to support us this evening. Mr. Lassiter, would you please stand?
He's back there.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate your service. What is going on with the families and children in Randolph County? Some of these data points you are already very aware of. This slide says median family income is 47, it's probably a little bit higher than that, 48,000. As well as all the positive things happening in our community, we have some pain points, some pressure areas that we need to address. My first bullet is talking about the number of children that are in food insecure homes. We have approximately 20% of the children who are living food insecure. For Randolph County Department of Social Services, we have determined so far around $62 million this year in food nutrition services benefit. Our food nutrition services caseloads are going up. Each caseload is around 1,100, and that is not a sustainable number. Our income maintenance caseworkers cannot continue to do that number and meet our performance measures. As a matter of fact, in our food nutrition services, we are not currently meeting performance measures based on the numbers that our staff are having to determine. We are continuing to work really hard on that, but that's one of the positions we've asked for in this year's budget. I didn't include it in this slide, but Randolph County is slated to receive an additional $140,000 in revenue for food nutrition services. And we would hope that that food nutrition services income maintenance caseworker would offset some of those funds. Another pain point that we have experienced this year is our increased work with our statutory legal responsibilities. This year, our petitions have increased almost double what they were in 18 and 19, from 70 to 139. That puts pressure on all parts of our child welfare team. I can't say that our numbers for CPS assessments have increased. We have normally around the same number that we usually had last year. But what has increased is the number of cases that are determined substantiated. That number has increased by more than 200%. So the same number of cases coming in, 200% more of those cases are substantiated for abuse, neglect, or dependency. So that is where some of that pain point for our legal team is coming in. So our legal team begins the process with the petition, assisted by our social work team, and those all have to be defended in court. And as you see from this number, it's not sustainable with the current staff that we have. That last bullet point talks about our Medicaid staff. I know that you guys have seen in the news, the possible Medicaid expansion is on the horizon. They're talking about it in Raleigh. And what we have learned is if that is true, there are possible 11,000 new beneficiaries who would be Medicaid eligible. And I can tell you that I join my colleagues in having workforce issues, and I do not have the 25 to 30 additional staff members that are going to be able to determine eligibility for 11,000 new staff members, for 11,000 new Medicaid eligibles. There are some things that we should be working together to advocate for if Medicaid expansion becomes a reality. Advocacy efforts should include state automation. All 11,000 of those citizens should not have to come to Department of Social Services in order to find out if they receive benefits. Advocacy efforts should also include caseload standards. As I mentioned before, some of my folks are carrying 1,100 folk caseload. That's not sustainable, they can't continue that. And with Medicaid, we have a negative position of paybacks. If they make a mistake in a case and it is caught in an audit, then we have to pay back that money. So that puts us in a really untenable position. One of the other things that I wanted to mention with Medicaid expansion is we are now in an age of Medicaid transformation. So our reimbursement to Medicaid currently is at 75%. So an advocacy point that we should gather together and ask for is increasing that amount. Now that we're in Medicaid transformation, Departments of Social Services still have to spend 25% of our own county money to fund those positions. And we think that the federal government should pick up a larger portion of that cost. Medicaid expansion is not here yet, but we keep hearing about it in Raleigh. And if it happens, we certainly don't have the staff members that we need in order to support that. Randolph County Department of Social Services has about 11 divisions. And I haven't mentioned foster care, that it's being talked about in the news that a lot of people are discussing. Our foster care numbers are up. I think every time I've come before this board, I've talked about the number of youth coming into foster care. And as I stated earlier, the number of actual child protective services intakes has remained pretty constant, but the number of cases that we are substantiating with abuse, neglect, and dependency has gone up 200%. I didn't ask for social work positions in this budget, and I didn't ask because we can't fill the social work positions that we currently have. That puts us in an untenable position. Whether we have the staff or not, we have statutory responsibilities that must be fulfilled. And those staff members that stood a few minutes ago, they all work really hard to meet our performance measures and meet our statutory obligations. It's very difficult when our workforce is going down, our retention is going down, and the number of children we have coming into care is going up. Food nutrition services caseloads are going up, possible Medicaid expansion on the horizon. In front of you is our funding pie chart. And as you can see, our largest pie is foster care. That tells you how much money we're spending on our foster care youth. Second largest is Medicaid. So foster care for twenty-one million, nearly twenty-one million dollar DSS budget, five point one percent, five point one million is for foster care. And the second largest is Medicaid, three point eight million. We've asked for four additional positions. Three of those are to support our legal responsibilities. Two, staff members that are requested to assist us with our court order visitation for foster youth. One, paralegal position, and one, income maintenance caseworker for food nutrition services. While we're talking about social workers, I also want to mention, along with my colleagues that were here, for social workers, we have around a thirty-nine percent turnover rate. I think Department of Social Services was the first to come and plead for assistance because we had more turnover than we could handle and we weren't able to do what we were supposed to do to protect children in our community. We continue to have those issues. We continue to work on them. We are throwing up every creative idea that we can think of. We recently had a hiring event that one of our staff members said, "Let's try this." So we went to all of the colleges that are local that had social work students graduating, and we had a hiring event. They could apply, be interviewed, sent for drug screens and background checks, and receive a contingency offer that day. And we were able to hire ten social work positions. Even with that, we still have a thirty-nine percent turnover rate, and we still have significant vacant positions.
Thirty-nine percent, did you say, Tracy?
Thirty-nine percent.
It's just burnout?
So all of our positions at Department of Social Services are extremely important. I talked about food insecurity and how important the staff members who make sure those families and children can get food are, and how important the staff members who make sure our families and children can get medical benefits. But child welfare, those staff see things that you should not have to see. They shouldn't have to see a mother offer up her twelve-year-old for drug money. They shouldn't have to see a mother inject her newborn with the same substances she's taking. They shouldn't have to see that. They shouldn't have to run through the woods after children in order to keep them safe in the middle of the night. All of those things have happened, and luckily, those staff came back the next day. But it's tough work. It's tough work, and some of the things you simply cannot unsee. This slide, I talk about funding social services. We have almost a twenty-one million dollar budget. Ten point eight of those are revenues that's brought in by our staff members and their work, and the county supports us with the other ten million. We try and keep that as close to fifty-fifty as possible with a little bit more in revenue as we can. Our staff work really hard on that, and that's one of our outcomes that we work for.
Tracy, that number, I mean, those numbers used to be further apart.
As far as which one?
Count the county's portion.
Yes. So are you referencing that there used to be more revenue or less?
I don't, that's my, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know. I'm just saying that the county portion seemed to be a smaller of the total.
So this is budgeted-
If it's closing that up.
This is budgeted amount and not actual spent amount.
Right.
At the end of the year, we will determine how much revenue we actually brought in and how much the county actually had to give us in order to meet our budget. But this is not actual. This is budget, budget amount.
The thing that I think we need to point out here is this is just the county's part. This is not state. This is not federal. This is just the county's part.
That's correct. I mentioned we're around, what did I say, sixty-two million for food nutrition services benefits? That's not included in there. And around a hundred and ninety-nine million for Medicaid benefits. That's not included in there. So, good point, Commissioner Dowd.
I want to, I want to make sure people understand that we're just talking about the county's portion. The numbers you're talking about are huge-
Yeah.
amounts of money.
Yeah. But you, you generated revenue of ten million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for this, which left the county to make up the ten million seventy-seven to fund that budget.
That's budgeted. We, we hope the revenue was going to be there and the county money will be less.
Well, that was the other question. So what could happen to the revenue?
What could happen? So is the question, could we bring in less revenue and the county portion be larger? That could happen, but I can tell you over the last five years, our revenue has been significantly higher than the amount of county funds. And I don't intend to let that happen on my watch. This slide just shows the four positions that we talked about that we've asked for. And I'm happy to take any questions. Before I do, I do want to thank all of you, along with our county leadership. It's been a tough year. It's been a tough year for everybody. When we come in here and we hear about all the workforce issues that everyone is having, that is significant for not just Department of Social Services, not just the Sheriff's Department. It's been tough for all of us, the constant turnover and the work becoming more and more difficult. It's been a tough year. So thank you for your support. I appreciate that when I throw something up in the air, you're willing to help and support us with our ideas.
Thank you, Tracy. And since you have a good delegation of your employees here, we have an opportunity to say thank you to them for the last three years and, and not wavering in delivering the services to the most critical of our citizens. And we've said it, you've heard us say it, but to have a chance to sit to these folks here tonight, and don't ever think that you're not appreciated. And you have a good leader who stands up for you, too.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to ask a question. You were not here Monday night when we heard the presentation from the Children's Home Society about the possibility of this public-private partnership that would use, use funds from our strategic planning money, the waste management funds. But I think you were interviewed for that. So, so what are your, what are your thoughts with, you know, with what you know?
I am in support of anything that lowers the number of children who have to enter the child welfare system. I don't know enough about it to know if that's going to be successful, but I do believe that we have to find new solutions to old problems, as well as we have to start working upstream. We have to build connections and begin supporting these families before they get involved with the child welfare system. I don't know the particulars, but again, I'm in support of anything that's going to assist us with caring for families and children, building those community connections before they intersect with the child welfare system.
I will say that they, that a similar type program was, or partnership was set up in South Carolina. And so it's, it's gone on long enough now that they have data to support it, and it has been very successful. There's one currently underway in Colorado, but, excuse me, but it hasn't been in place long enough for there to be data to, you know, to study. It's different.
Not, not, not to follow up on that, but I'd like to follow up on one, one point. In getting your people recruiting, you're losing folks, I know you're bound to be, that are leaving your employment because of stress, Mr. Chairman, and, and other things. But I don't know that our general public understands what your qualifications have to be in finding these people. These people have to have certain levels of educational requirements, and every county is getting, is trying to get them. Could you enunciate a little bit about where you find the people that you need to have?
I would love to say that Department of Social Services had a tree, and we could go and pull up staff members that we needed, but that would not be the truth. It is very difficult to find employee, employees who are willing to do the very, very tough work that you have to do at Department of Social Services. Sometimes our staff will come in and have things planned in the evening. But if you're involved, if you're involved in a case, and like I said, two hundred percent more of those cases, we subbed abuse, neglect, or dependency. So you're coming in to do a day's work, and you might have plans that evening. And you might be those staff members running through the woods after children. Or you might be sitting at the hospital with an infant that's been injected with a legal substance, and you can't leave. So those team members are required to have college degrees, four-year degrees.
That's what I'm getting at. What, what level are you talking about?
They're required to have a four-year degree, preferably a BSW, a Bachelor's in Social Work. We would love to have a Master's in Social Work, some of them do, and experience in social work. You can't come into these positions just off the street with a regular college degree and be able to do them. It takes a very qualified person that's able to do these positions, which makes it even more difficult to find qualified people. We can only take someone with a college degree for a social worker.
That's what I was trying to get at. It's a specialized thing. Well, they're, they're specialized as well, the paramedics and all. But you're, you're having to hunt for college-educated-level people that, that have to have a certain timeframe to learn their ropes as well and deal with things.
That's true. And work-life balance is very difficult in our line of work. We're doing all that we can at our level in our agency to support our employees, to encourage a work-life balance. But sometimes, based on the job that is, has to be done and the number of cases that we have, it's simply not possible to do.
Like, I liked your story about going to the schools and recruiting. That's, that's pretty good, too. I don't know, are you going to continue with that, or?
It, it was successful. So we want to do it bigger and better every single time. So if we find something that works, we're going to try and keep doing it until it no longer works. In this age of competition with workforce, you, you guys are aware, we've got people, you know, they want to work from home now, and they can make as much money working from home. And working at Department of Social Services is tough. And if you want to be popular, then don't work there, right? You have to make very, very tough decisions that aren't popular. So it's tough.
There's, there's always been a stigma with the services that are delivered by social services.
Yes.
A lot of people, most people, don't have an idea of the critical issues that go on in, right here in this county every day.
That's true.
But you say, yours to worry about, a, a, a worker would have to be dealt with with a situation, they have a child that had to go to the hospital and injected with something and whatever. They can't leave.
They can't leave. And you have to stay there until it's done. If it's two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, if it's the next day. And if we file the petition, that same worker has to come in and make sure the paperwork is done so that petition can be filed and we can make sure that child is safe.
So it's not a nine-to-five job, and it's not forty hours a week?
It isn't. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank all of you again for, for being here tonight to support Tracy and hear the presentations that have been made and what you do every day. All right, Public Health, Tara?
Good evening, Chairman Frye, Commissioners. Before I get into budget, I do want to recognize Marty Trotter, who is our Board Chair for Board of Health. I do want to thank him for being here and all his support. He's a great Board Chair, and I'm not buttering up. I just had my one-year performance evaluation, so I'm not trying to butter him up. And I want to thank Hope Haywood, too. She serves on our board, and she's always very supportive. So I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all this evening regarding our budget. I think I'm probably the first department head tonight that's not asking for anything special in our budget this year. No positions, nothing like that. But I, I do want to share similar sentiments, that, that we have similar sentiments in Public Health as other colleagues have here tonight about recruitment, retention, and longevity and merit. Public Health was part of that, I think Jill said, eighteen point seven, eight percent turnover rate for 2021. Public Health is a department of anywhere between seventy and eighty employees. And during fiscal year twenty-one, we lost seventeen staff. It's not, it's more common for us to lose six to ten maybe a year, if that many, during fiscal year twenty-one. Of those seventeen, five of those were retirements, but the others were burnout or they just needed a change of scenery. But just quickly, and I won't take up a whole lot of your time, but some of the current concerns that we have related to recruitment and retention are, I'll just share that there's a couple of specific positions that we always have difficulty filling. And this probably isn't the first time that you all have heard this, but nurse positions are always very difficult to fill. We're never able to, to compete with hospitals. We're never able to compete with insurance companies, those types of facilities. We just can't. And then I want to bring up a concern that some of you have may, may have heard from your colleagues that are with other counties that are Commissioners, environmental health specialists. Right now, we don't have a problem in Randolph County with environmental health specialists, but statewide, there is, I don't want to say a shortage, but there's a difficulty in hiring environmental health specialists, specifically on-site wastewater staff. You know, with the surge in building right now, that has put a demand, a greater demand on the applications that are coming in for soil evaluations and new wells. Right now, we are very blessed to have a staff of very seasoned environmental health specialists that do that work here. These folks have been here for twenty-plus years, all five of them. Wayne Jones is a supervisor. He's getting ready to celebrate thirty years. Brad Ellis will soon be celebrating twenty-five years. Brian Davis and Nathan Henson will soon have twenty-three years. And Rob Lowe will soon have twenty-one years. So the writing's on the wall, y'all. In a few years, we're going to have a mass exodus. And I don't know if y'all know, but most of these folks that are in environmental health, on-site wastewater, most of their experience is right here in Randolph County. They've spent most of all of their years in, in Randolph County. I do want to share with you the demand for environmental health specialists is causing counties that are experiencing shortages to, to raise their salaries. And I'll give you an example. Not long ago, Moore County, who is experiencing an on-site wastewater staff shortage, bumped up salaries in trying to hire environmental health specialists. They bumped up their salaries. The minimum starting salary for a trained environmental health specialist in Moore County is sixty thousand dollars. That's more than some of our seasoned twenty-plus-year employees make now. Thankfully, I don't think any of our folks are going anywhere. I think they're pretty satisfied where they are. But if, if they did decide to go somewhere, I, we can't compete with that kind of a salary.
What was the start?
In, in Moore County, sixty, sixty thousand, with a potential for more if they have all of that experience. The range, the hiring range was sixty thousand, one oh one to seventy-five, one twenty-nine. Our environmental health specialist hiring range is forty-two, eight, twenty-eight, eighty-five to sixty-six, three seventy-five, thirty-five. It's a specialized position. There's a, they have to have specific education requirements, a minimum four-year degree with at least thirty semester hours in the physical or biological sciences. So you can't just hire anybody to do those positions. And then they're specifically trained in centralized intern training to do specific- to do specific activities. Like our guys that do on-site wastewater, they are specifically authorized to do on-site wastewater. So I'm just putting that out there that I think it's important that we start planning now, that we, that we keep the people that we have, because we've got, we've got such a, such a good team. But we do have to plan ahead, because when they leave, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll get folks that will come and stay. But that's, that's the only one little group in our department that has remained pretty constant for as long as I've been here. And I'm, I'll soon be here 17 years. So I did want to mention that, that we do have concerns about recruitment and of course, retention, because we don't want to lose the good people that we have. But that's all that I have. And if you all have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Questions?
Congratulations on your recent award.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for the job.
Thank you.
Public Buildings, Robert?
Good evening, everybody. I guess y'all are aware, I did request a tech position. It got tabled till January. Fortunately, we don't have the turnover issue that others have, but we do have the retirement issue. I've got three techs going to retire within the next two years and a foreman. So that's going to leave us hurt. Right now, the average age of HVAC tech is about 55. Plumbers, electricians, about 42. So it's, it's, it's going to be hard to replace them. We won't replace the, the knowledge, experience. But we definitely got to look at that in the future, looking forward. I, I'd like to tell y'all a little bit about what we do. We're not just a maintenance department. We're a moving company. We're a delivery service. We're pretty much, whatever comes down the pipe, we try to make it happen. The courthouse during renovation, I had two people over there all the time, four people a lot of the time. You know, we, we renovate. We just did EMS basin, ram sewer. So we do everything. Like I said, whatever comes down the pipe. Just like today, Hal called me and said the air is off at what, 4:30 maybe?
4:30, 4:30. I just walked in the door.
And fortunately, I had people here within probably 15 minutes and it was a simple fix. So that was good. Or this would not have been a pleasant meeting, I can guarantee it. But yeah, we do a lot of things. In throughout the county, we've got approximately 200 HVAC units that we have to look after. That right there in itself, to be serviced and serviced correctly, would take two teams. Now, we try to send our people out in teams just for safety issues, because we may be in an air handler unit, we're up on a ladder, we're in a, you know, attic space, whatever. So we, we always try to do that. And the position I'm asking for, it will complete it. Right now, we have 15 people in the maintenance and six in housekeeping. So we stay pretty busy. But that, that tech position will round that out to where we have even teams. Right now, the one odd position acts as a floater when somebody's on vacation or, or whatever, when we just need maybe something that can, he can do. But we also do the signs, too, all the road signs out in the county. And that's a pretty big job. We're, we're in the process of trying to switch them all over to the newer signs that you can see better. Plus the, all bunch of signs throughout the county. And that's, I guess that's about it. We, we really need that position, because we've got to get some people in here and get experience before these others retire. If not, we'll be left holding the bag. If that, if we didn't have somebody that could take care of that HVAC, it would have probably been, next week before we would have got somebody here to look at it, at best. Any questions?
Questions?
I guess you already answered that. That just fills out a team, a two-man team.
Yeah, yeah. Because like I said, we try to send them out in teams, because a lot of the stuff we do is dangerous. And some, you know, the schools had an issue with somebody a few years back that didn't end very well. So that's pretty much when we started doing that, just for safety issues.
Thanks for what you've been doing, Robert. Thanks for all your help.
Yes, sir.
All these other.
And I did want to mention, too, during the pandemic, you know, we got tasked with that, keeping all that stock in PPE and going out and fogging buildings when we get the call. I just came in on a Sunday and fogged one Memorial Day weekend. So we're still getting those, too, but they have slowed down.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Great job.
All right, Soil and Water?
Good evening, Commissioner Frye and Commissioners. As you can see, I'm not Jenny Parks. I'm Caitlin Johnson. She sends her regrets for not being here tonight. And I also have one of my board members, Shane Whitaker, back there in the back to support us also. We are very happy with the proposed budget from the county manager. And I would like to report to you guys tonight, the last time I talked to y'all, we did not have a number on the money we would be receiving from the STRAP program. I have that number for you tonight. We will be getting $422,194 as an initial allocation. We hope if we can lay this money down and get rolling, we'll get even more. So all of our requests will be going to help us get those funds implemented as quickly as possible and also help with our other programs we already implement. So I just wanted to say thank you for the proposed budget. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them and to let you guys know what we're going to be getting.
So I guess you're just going to focus on the worst of those sites that need to be?
Yes. So we have ranked all of the segments that we have proposed. And we have to submit a scope of work, and by the Fourth of July, actually, to the state of what we're going to start working on with that initial allocation. So yeah, it'll be the worst of the worst to begin with. And what we looked at were like watershed acres, public benefit, downstream features like bridges, things like that, all went into the ranking process.
Looking forward to hear some, hear about.
Yeah, I'll be happy to come back with an update once we get some projects completed. Yes, ma'am.
Would love to see that.
Congratulations on the board.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions? Thank you guys again.
Okay, Animal Services, Ashley? Jonathan?
Good evening, everyone, all members of the board. We are here to first thank you guys for all the county support that we've had for the ever-changing animal services as we're growing as a whole. We do not have too much going on with our budget. We are satisfied with that. However, we did ask for more spay and neuter funds. We do have an, an increase of animals coming in. That has not changed. And we, with that being said, having more, we're able to put more up for adoption. So therefore, we need that funding for the spay and neuter. Also, with vaccines and medicines, due to the increase of animals coming in, we do have to be able to treat them and give them the care that they need to keep our shelter healthy. Gasoline, with gas prices fluctuating the way they are, we have really had to ask for extra funding for that. Our officers are out on the road more, more transportation with the animals for spay and neutering. So therefore, we do need that funding there extra.
And I'm going to talk about the ACO position that we asked for. But first, I know we're asking for money, but we're also going to tell you how we saved some money. I'd contacted the sheriff, I believe it was about a, close to a year ago. We had asked about possibly looking at using their fleet maintenance garage just to see what their costs were for us as a county compared to what we're paying. At the time, we were paying about $60 on oil change. Whenever we got our first bill, it was actually $20 to get an oil change. So we was able to save $40 just by going to the fleet maintenance. And I will say about their fleet corporal, I can text him, call in at any time, and he'll say, bring it on in, we'll get it done. And that's actually saved us a lot of time, a lot of money, and have been able to put our trucks on the road quicker. We do have where we can plan it. They've got an app where you go on there and tell them exactly what, what time you want to come. You're in, you're out within 15, 20 minutes. And that saves us a lot of time with our response time as well. For the animal control officer position, our call volume has gone up year by year, from 7:119 to 6:3020. We're at 2,629 calls. 2020 to 2021, 2,714 calls. And of 21 just to May, we're at 3,031 calls. So we're, we're, the calls are going to continue going up. When me and, I believe, no, me and Heather went and spoke to the mayors of Trinity and areas of like that, they always said it was response times. That was one thing that they were kind of gigging animal control on in 2020, was our response times. I have been able to lower the response times, but they're not where I, I want them to be. With that additional animal control officer, we can lower the response times. Plus, we have dangerous dog cases we have to work. I want to kind of designate that officer for that as well. And with bites, I mean, we average anywhere from five to 10 bites a week. And that's a lot that's got to, we have to do as officers to keep up with. And that'd be something good that we could also have that officer doing as well. Have been able to have the officers more in their zones, getting the calls done.
Very good.
And that's all we have.
Questions?
That, your position, is it one part-time position? Or is that his, is that his, is it one whole position or?
I think it's one full-time.
Yeah, the position that I'm asking for is a full animal control officer position. We do have a part-time position that's open right now, but we are requesting for an animal control officer position.
Yeah, you have an open current position that's, that's, that's already in the budget?
Yes, sir. It's, yeah, it's already in there.
You asked for one new animal control officer.
Correct, correct.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Juvenile Day Reporting, Pam?
Good evening, everyone. I stand before you first thanking you for your continued support for the Juvenile Day Reporting Center. Two years ago, I stood before you as the new director of the JDRC and I asked for support with a substance abuse case manager. You granted the position and a few months later, the JDRC was certified and licensed as a substance abuse outpatient facility for juveniles, a resource that has been so desperately needed in our community. Last year, I stood before you asking for support with a peer mentor. And you accepted the proposal and provided our agency with a mentor, which is also so desperately needed in our community. So today, I stand before you and I want you all to know how important our services are to the youth in our community, where the JDRC was and how far we have come in two short years battling huge issues with the pandemic, the opioid epidemic, and the growing concerns of heinous crimes being committed by and involving our juveniles. For the past 20 years, the JDRC has served at-risk youth in various programming in our community. For the past 10 years, the JDRC has consistently served about 250 juveniles a year. I'm proud to announce to date this fiscal year, since the end of, well, actually, May, we have served over 700 youth. We have more than doubled and almost tripled the amount of youth we have served in previous years. I want you to know that the, thanks to the growing and nurturing partnerships, we have seen an influx of our clients, but also have been able to open the doors to more innovative programming necessary for our youth to be successful and receive the help that they so desperately need. With the two positions you have provided funding for, the substance abuse counselor and the peer mentor, we've served over 100 youth in our substance abuse program this year and have provided free counseling and assessments for some of them as well. Our mentor position has served over 20 youth in our community, providing them with opportunities, college tours, academic enhancement services, and a positive pro-social group to engage in everyday life with. Without your support in these areas, we could have not provided such critical, life-changing programming and relationship building for these youth. I want you all to know that Randolph County this year has been selected by the state to engage in a program, a pilot program, for traffic teen court, allowing our youth who are 16 to 17 to engage in our teen court, in our teen court program for traffic offenses. The JDRC has been awarded money from the state to provide this critical, life-changing alternative to our youth. With this, some of my staff will be certified at, as alive at 25 defensive driver instructors to ensure our youth are thinking before they get behind the wheel. A course that would normally cost the teen or the parent money, our agency will be able to provide for free. The youth who complete all sanctions through Traffic Teen Court will receive a dismissal for the traffic offense. And I've been working closely with our district attorney and this program will be up and running July 1st. This year, the JDRC has also assisted the Project Safe Neighborhood Committee with being selected into a pilot program for the EKG II program. The JDRC and law enforcement will be trained to instruct the Gain and Gun Safety Curriculum that will be taught alongside our law enforcement to our youth that will hopefully start in the fall in all of our schools. The JDRC has also accepted a partnership with Randolph Community College to provide critical schooling support for those youth who are not allowed on their campuses due to criminal activities, records or behaviors, and who are attempting to obtain their GEDs. These students will no longer have to sit at home alone, working on a computer. Will come, they will come to our office to receive support and tutoring. We currently have two students that come in three days a week for about four hours a day to receive tutoring and work on their schooling and their degrees. RCC has provided us with technology, a faculty member and support, and JDRC is providing that safe space for the juveniles to attend their classes just to obtain their schooling goals. We have also been approved to assist this year the schools with youth who have been suspended or expelled. If need be, youth have the opportunity to spend at least six hours in our facility every day that they're out on suspension to complete their schoolwork, receive tutoring, attend classes, and not be left home or idle. We will keep them in a structured routine to endure, to ensure that they don't fall off track with their schooling. They will also be held accountable by their actions by having to engage in one of our curriculums that we have as well. I tell you all this so you can understand the growing that JDRC has done in the past two years. Every year, we apply for a grant that's offered through the juvenile crime prevention. This year, I'm happy to announce that we've received all of that grant money, which is $407, $536, which has allowed us to expand our services as well as cover the costs of positions of the peer mentor specialists that you guys were given, had given us last year, as well as the increases in the salaries that I'm asking for to make the transportation aides full-time to be able to change their roles and expand their roles to a processing assistant to assist with this additional work that we have. I would like you all to know that I do pride myself in providing the best services to our youth and our community. In order to do that, I'm asking that you allow me to expand the roles of the two transportation drivers to assist in the two new programs that we've implemented with the Traffic Teen Court and parenting classes. I'm asking for you to fund a new position this year in the form of an office manager. With the immense increase in work my staff has taken on, I too have also carried caseloads to ensure efficient and effective services to our community. Doing this has taken me away from the time needed in order to continue searching for outside grant money to enhance programming even more. I will, however, mention that additional programs I have implemented at the JDRC have all been paid for from additional grant monies, as well as being selected to participate in pilot programs due to the JDRC's reputation here in Randolph County. Upgrading equipment such as Chromebooks and computers for our youth, security cameras for our vans, as well as the purchasing of new vehicles have also been paid for for additional grant monies that I've applied for every year. An office manager will allow more oversight on our programs, staff and growth, which is continuing to impact our community in a very positive way. Our community deserves the best services possible and I intend to continue doing that. Please consider the proposal you have in front of you. Thank you for your time and I will take any questions.
Any questions? Good work.
Thank you.
Good to have you with us. Okay, then, Child Support Services?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, this is going to be a little different than my-
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is going to be a little different than my annual trip up here for twenty seconds, but I promise I will not be here, up here as long as Donovan.
Thank you very much.
That won't be hard. That'll be the easiest part of this. But before I begin, I just want to say that we have a great group of department heads. And I'm honored and proud to be a part of them. We're about to lose a really good one in Michael Rowland to retirement, so I want to publicly thank him for all of his helps, all the help he's given me over the years, it's been amazing. I really appreciate that and also appreciate him introducing me to the Pick 'n Pig in Carthage.
You're right.
So thank you very much for that, Michael. You'll be missed. For the first time since two thousand fourteen, I'm going to be requesting something to the board. You could see that in the request for new positions part of the budget. Just take into consideration that what I'm asking you for tonight will be reimbursed by the federal government at sixty-six percent. Now, many departments in our, in our government have lines of succession. We don't have that in my office right now. And we need to be more in line with the departments and also in line with the county's continuity plan. If something was to happen to me tonight on my way home and I wasn't able to function or worse, there really wouldn't be anybody to take my place immediately and keep the office operating. So we need to take care of that, I think. I think that's very important. Now, should you, in approving the budget, if you decide to give me the two lead positions that I'm asking for, those will be two managers to help me out, and we'll be able to fall back on them. As of April, we have five thousand and one open cases. We've got eleven caseworkers and three clerical to handle that casework.
How many cases? Did you say five?
Five thousand and one. And that was in the end of April. And what we've done is taken a look at counties with caseloads similar to ours and compared their workforce to ours. So we started out with Cabarrus County. They have four thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight cases open. They have a program manager, three line, three line supervisors, nineteen caseworkers, and support staff. In Davidson County, they have offices in Thomasville and in Lexington with a combined caseload of five thousand thirty-three. They have a combined workforce of thirteen caseload, caseworkers, four clerical, and a paralegal. They also have a deputy director. Catawba County has five thousand five hundred and seventy-six open cases. They have a program manager, supervisor, and twenty caseworkers. Now, I did this to show that even if you add my two positions, we're still going to be a lean county department compared to others. And I know it's important, and it's important to me too, that we keep as small government as possible. But just to give you the other end of the spectrum, my friends in Orange County, they have one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven cases. They have a director, an assistant director, and nineteen caseworkers and clerical staff to handle their caseload.
Which one's that, Dana?
That's, that's Orange County. So that's, that'll give you some sort of difference with what we're looking at here as far as employees and caseload size. So I hope that you will consider helping me out in approving those two positions for managers. Just keep in mind, once again, sixty-six percent of what's spent is going to be reimbursed by the federal government. Does anyone have any questions?
Same message.
So, so the budget request number is the full request that'll be reimbursed back to you? So if I look at, divide it by two, it's about seventy-two thousand dollars.
Um. I was told and shown that what I'm looking at shows ninety-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six for salary. The FICA's seven thousand thirty-four, the health insurance, twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty. Retirement, thirteen thousand eight dollars for a total of one hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. And after, under the, under the line for general county revenues required is forty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Total for both?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Damon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Jay Dale is not here, said he's okay. Veteran Services, Chad Gurley, let's see, I think Elizabeth Wood is here to do the presenting tonight.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to start off by saying thank you for giving us this opportunity. He does send his condolences, apologies that he could not be here. I'm going to start with, let's see if it comes up. He had put together a slideshow for this evening, and we're going to start with, our mission. So our mission is to provide superior service and advocacy for our Randolph County veterans and their dependents. The strategic plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-two through two thousand twenty-eight is with our first goal to ensure that all communications and messages are clear and consistent. I apologize, I lost the slide. There we go. And consistent across veteran and human services. One area that I would like to point out is that often we, people think that we work for the VA, but we do not. We work for the veterans of Randolph County. And we just help navigate the VA system to obtain the benefits that they are entitled to. The second goal is to ensure access to resources while tailoring the delivery of benefits and custom, customizing care, memorialization, and services to foster equality and promote independence with optimal outcomes and the well-being of our veterans and their families, caregivers, and survivors. The third goal of our department is to ensure that veteran services culture of accountability drives ethical behavior and trust across the organization within the community of our human service partners. The fourth goal is to have strategic assets, people, infrastructure, data, and technology, leverage governance, best practices, and evidence. Our fifth goal is the management of principles to improve performance and outcomes for our veterans and their beneficiaries. A few of the accomplishments our office is excited to share from two thousand twenty-two include that we converted forty-five hundred paper case files to the electronic database. Veterans Benefits Management System are also known as V B M S. The launch of video teleconferencing for claim assistant and appellate hearings, which we are seeing a lot more of with the denials of claims, was in response to the pandemic. Since then, we have conducted over a thousand hearings. All staff members or members have received full accreditation to prepare, present, and prosecute claims on behalf of veterans through the Department of Veteran Affairs. The piloted, piloted the Mobile Veteran Service Officer Initiative to aid veterans in the community who cannot make it. Our future opportunities are the creation of a newsletter for distribution through the county, electronic or paper, the launch of virtual or in-person town hall meetings, collaborate with wellness coordinator Sam Varner for a veteran suicide prevention team, to collaborate with the sheriff's office on a veterans drug treatment council, and to strengthen the mobile service officer program. Some of you may be wondering what the Mobile Veteran Service Officer Program is about. In the last few years, veteran services experienced a surge in requests for mobile intakes with the county. Since of April, we received over seventy calls from elderly veterans or family members who cannot travel to our Ashboro office. Most recently, a joint venture with EMS on May fifth, along with a sheriff's deputy, engaged with a disabled veteran in Archdale who had no phone or transportation. The veteran had, has a complication with an immobile leg as well as cognitive impairment. We were able to assist in our location over the phone with plans of following up in person. Another example was on December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, we received a call from a young veteran family who lacked the economical and logistical means to obtain groceries before the incoming holiday. Our office partnered with a local group known as the Mustang Mafia to provide groceries for this family as well as twelve others. And I also want to add that our local AMVets had also graciously donated meals that helped an additional five families. It is our desire for our county commissioners to fund one additional full-time and one part-time position for mobility outreach throughout the county. This will ensure that we meet the needs of those we serve in a special population. Our key priorities for the new year is new and creative methods for advertising and promotion, customer satisfaction, and community partnerships. Other than myself and Ms. Lisa Wright, who is here tonight, and I want to thank her for that, our director Chad Gurley, we also have Mr. Kenneth Harville. Again, I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity, your support of Veteran Services, and our team. And if you have any questions, I will try my best to answer them. I know Mr. Gurley had given out some gray binders that may have a little bit more information in there.
Do we have a, I know it's a, it's a big issue all over the U.S., but with veteran suicides in Randolph?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I actually just completed last Friday in Charlotte, a governor's, governor's institute class, a veteran support specialist, and throughout that eight, nine-week class that we did, veteran suicide was one of them, MST, which is military sexual trauma, mental health behavior, substance abuse, and then the last part of the class, we did do suicide prevention.
You have any questions, folks?
Thank you, guys.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Registered deeds?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, and board members.
Good evening.
Hope you're all doing well. I have come before you today with no additional proposals. I did want to say, for the last couple of years, as soon as the pandemic started, the governor had named us a central office, so our office could not close. We had to be there every day, eight to five, serving the citizens of this county with very few restrictions. And I wanted just to say thank you to my staff for all their hard work because the last two years, our revenues have increased substantially. Our budget level's been the same, but our revenues have increased, and I just thank them for all their hard work. I did want to say that, again, that we do not propose anything additional this time. We're actually reducing the revenues levels and the expense levels due to the forecast of the economy, inflation could be a recession. So we have reduced that because all of our numbers are based on our recordings, or the majority of its recordings. So if the economy goes south, then our numbers go south. So that's basically all I have besides a new and very important, I think, service that we're going to start providing in the near future. It's our passport acceptance program. We were actually accepted by the U.S. Department of State to go process that, you know, go ahead forward with that program. And we've had, including myself, we've got three members that will be processing the passports and taking pictures and just serving the citizens of Randolph County. So we're excited about that. We're going to start that on July fifth, right after the holiday. So we're excited about that one. Did y'all have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I can have a second?
I do this every year, but I had the opportunity to, to interact with a lot of registered deeds in the central part of the state, and we are so fortunate. Ms. Low and her staff, they are unbelievable. It's, registered deeds here is, is top-notch.
I know all the attorneys in High Point love coming to Randolph County.
Thank you. We like them all to come too. We do enjoy the job and the staff enjoys it too. We, we have, I have a good team.
It's a really good staff.
Thank you.
I just echo what Ben said. It was one of the two offices in the county that I didn't really use much. One of the two offices in the county that I didn't really use much in the service levels. Incredible, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Krista, what are you doing to get, to communicate the fact that you're going to start processing those passports? I mean, that's a, that's a valuable service as citizens.
Thank you. Well, we've got the press release ready for the news. We're doing a, they're pushing out on Facebook, we're doing that. The Chamber of Commerce is going to push out a, a message to everyone, so.
Okay, good, and we need to be sure Chelsea gets it on the webpage.
Yes, yes, we've got that too.
All right, well, good.
That's a good service. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. All right, Adult Day reporting, Tim Levin. Thanks for your patience tonight.
My name's Tim Levin. I'm coming from the Adult Day Reporting Center. I'm the case manager there. Ms. Austin, my director, had a last-minute medical event that's preventing, preventing her from being here. So I'm just kind of filling in. She asked me to ask you regarding transportation, an additional fifteen hundred dollars. That is the only thing that she wanted me to propose. So mine is short and sweet, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Is that a fuel capital L.A. or what is that? Somewhere, but thank you.
Is that, is that related to fuel prices or more, more people to pick up or both?
There's going to be more people to pick up and the fuel prices.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Just on a personal note, I worked for the state of North Carolina for about twenty-nine years.
Yes.
I thoroughly love working for local government.
Thank you.
You can pick up the phone and talk to somebody by name to get help, and that's huge.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks for being with us, Tim. Tax, Deborah Hill?
Good evening and thank you all for listening to all of our, our needs. The tax department, I have no additional request for my budget. I would just like to say that, though, that our operating expenses have, will increase for the, this year's budget, mainly due to our county-wide reappraisal. Those additional expenses will be for the printing and postage of value change notices for seventy-five thousand plus parcels, additional fuel cost, and more sessions of the Board of Equalization Review. We'll also be adding a GL account for credit card transaction fees. We are trying to save some money by going paperless. Our real estate appraisers are now have mobile, mobile devices to take out into the field that saves printing a six-page property record card. So, and they're being very successful with downloading their information and getting it back into our office. Also this year, we have offering the taxpayers a service of, for their annual tax bills. They can go in and register to get those tax bills via email. That will save postage and printing, so I hope a lot of taxpayers take advantage of that. The tax department, we also have some, I've had a hard time filling a position for a real estate appraiser. But that is something I'm seeing statewide. So I've had a real estate appraisers position open for almost a year, but hopefully I've got somebody coming in in August to take that position. But if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Deborah, what are you seeing in values around the county?
What we're seeing in real estate values is nothing I've seen in the forty years I've worked for the tax department. We're seeing skyrocketing values. Our reevaluation is going to be tough, evaluating what true market value is on some of these sales, determining if somebody has, you know, when somebody's offering twenty, thirty thousand dollars. dollars over the asking price, is that true market value? So, we're, we're really, I won't say struggling, but we're looking at this deep to really assess and get the true market value of properties. It's just phenomenal what we're seeing. We are seeing some multi-section manufactured homes on one-acre lot for selling for two-hundred thousand dollars.
You did what? Say that again.
Double wide on a lot, selling for over two-hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
We are, it's just, and back in two thousand nine reappraisal, some mobile homes were selling for less than a lot of storage building. You was buying a storage building at Lowe's Hardware for. So, this is the difference. We're seeing a lot of new construction, a lot of new construction.
Any other questions, Deborah? I got one. Is that a new do?
I have a new do.
I haven't seen Deborah in a while. Is that a new do?
Deborah, I don't want to belabor the point, but I guess I'm hearing the word recession, and how would that impact, um, with the interest rates increasing?
Interest rates will slow, and Ben can back me up on this. Interest rates will slow the sales. It will slow. Materials has slowed construction, because people can't get the materials.
Windows and doors.
Yeah. And a lot of things. The, oh, lost my train of thought. We will look at sales up until January the first of two thousand twenty-three. This recession, it's got, it's got to slow down, but if the bottom falls out in two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, the statute says we assess it as of January the first, so we don't want to happen what happened in two thousand and nine.
Yeah.
When, when it bottom fell out after we'd done a reappraisal. That's, that's tough for the citizens.
That, that was my concern. So, you answered my question. Thank you.
But we're, we're seeing it level out some, but some of the values has just been unreal.
Well, sometimes everything evens out over a course of time, but we'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens.
What do you see about banks scoping up houses and inventory knows?
I read a lot about it. I've not seen that much in Randolph County yet, but I read nationwide that is a problem.
Yeah.
I'm seeing there is some developments that are being built. You, I can think of one in Randleman, the new construction going up as rental property. So, he's not.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have any, unless you have some history, but, you know, they're building houses up there on sixty-two from, from Braxton Craven to the Thomasville City Limits, just every inch of land that's possible.
Colette Farms and Bello Woods, and it's.
And the Letero is building, I'd say probably half to two-thirds of them. I just wondered if they were doing any of that?
They're selling on the Sashes they're building.
Wow. That one up there next to Archdale, I mean, Barbecue Joe's. I mean, they're putting them in there like crazy.
And they're small lots, but they're putting, but there's, there's a lot of square footage in those houses.
You can lean out the window and shake hands with your neighbor.
Do what?
You can lean out the window and shake hands with your neighbor. Do a high five.
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
IT, Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'll be quick. I am perfectly happy with the budget as presented. Thank you so much. I would like to point out that the budget does include the security projects that were presented to you at the spring retreat, so those will, will get kicked off this year. Those will do a lot of good for our security. I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson, Mr. Massey, for all the work they do to put, put together this budget. It's, it's incredible. And I'd like to thank the board for all the support you've shown IT over the years. I really do appreciate it. You put a lot of trust in us, and thank you.
We'll miss you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
He's smiling more these days.
Yes, I am. Yes, ma'am.
We figured you'd have a big budget request, since this is your last time. Go out with a bucket.
Whoa.
I, I think, I think the security projects are going to be important.
They are. They, they are going to be a priority this coming year, I'm sure.
Thank you for working on those.
Yes, sir. Very important.
I know some of it has a shelf life. How, how current are we hardware, software?
We're, we're, well, part of our, we have a replacement plan, and so, like, for our networking gear, we've got like eighty thousand dollars budgeted for replacement gear, and so that's, that's an ongoing thing. We do the same thing for some of our infrastructure software. So, every five years is when we try to replace some of our infrastructure gear, and because of that shelf life, so, usually every five years. So, we're continuously doing that. We've got so much equipment.
All right. Thank you again, Michael.
Thank you. I'll miss you.
Elections, Melissa?
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you so much for allowing us to come before you tonight. I want to take this opportunity to recognize my board members that are here this evening. If you'll just raise your hand. Margaret McGarry and Mary Joan Pugh, and a couple of staff members that are with us tonight that you mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Rose.
Rose Lassiter.
On her anniversary.
Her, yeah, her, she doesn't know, but her anniversary was announced earlier tonight.
Happy anniversary, Rose.
So, I just want to say, first of all, that I work with a board, a bipartisan board, that works so well together. I am so fortunate. I hear about boards of elections throughout the state. They're a fantastic group of people that work together, always put the voters first. And with our staff, those that are here and those aren't here, this group is, is our defenders of democracy, we like to call them. They all do a wonderful job, in addition to two to three hundred poll workers that work every year, or every election. So, you'll see that we are requesting considerably less funding this year. Ours, our budget fluctuates depending on how many elections we have, so it's always nice when we can come, and so we don't need as much money. We will be conducting the general election in November, but luckily for our budget, we will not have a second primary, so we won't have to fund that. So, we'll be given a little money back. So, thanks to careful planning, grant funding, county support, we also have most of the equipment that we need to conduct our elections. Our offices, as you know, provide an efficient and well-equipped facilities to plan and conduct elections. Our requested budget, although it's less money, does include a few improvements. One of those is some IT equipment, some routers to secure our early voting equipment, the continuation of our ballot-on-demand service, which we felt was really, did a really good job this year during early voting. And we're also going to introduce a mobile text system, so that voters can use their cell phones to locate their polling place, find out other information on voting. So, we're looking forward to rolling that out for November. It also includes one capital request, which is a funding, which is funding to upgrade our front counter to make it more secure. Security of elections workers, you may have read, is a priority across the nation. We see that as an important need as well. The only other thing I'll say is thank you for your continued and generous support. We feel it, and we really do appreciate it, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Are you going to go forward now with, with those renovations at Archdale, at that building, like, was talked about?
No, there's no plan to, to do that. Our plan is to continue to have early voting at Braxton Craven as long as we can, as long as it works out with the county and the, and the school system. We have a verbal commitment from each side that if, if, if anything needs to happen, we need ninety to a hundred days to, to find something else. So, we're glad that we won't need to spend that ten thousand dollars to renovate. We may look at moving that site altogether as an election day site and move it to Brax, well, not to Braxton Craven, but somewhere else. So, we'll, we'll look at any of those changes that need to be made, but we won't need to spend that money right now.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Corporate extension, Kenny?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Glad to be here. Thank you for continued support for Corporate Extension Services in Randolph County. We appreciate all that you do for us. Take a personal moment to thank Senator, I mean, Commissioner McDowell and Commissioner Kidd for attending my son's graduation last night. I don't know, Commissioner Kidd realized afterwards that he was attending my son's graduation, but, but Mr. McDowell, did you know you were attending my son's graduation? So, I appreciate you being there, and I'm sure the rest of you were at other graduations also.
Is he going to go to NC State?
He is not going to NC State. He's going to be majoring in Computer Science at UNC Charlotte.
All right.
So, we'll have another Computer Science. Maybe he'll take Michael's job one day, so, so, anyway.
Personally, I might add, I was glad it was inside.
Yes. It was a lot cooler, and it was a lot drier, because we did get some showers of rain. So, very happy with Commissioner, Manager's budget. I appreciate all the support you had. There's a very, there was a very small increase over last year's budget. Happy to say that one of the main reasons that small increase happened is we're able to add those part-time summer 4H workers back in the budget, because we're doing 4H summer programming this summer. It's exciting to see, we had a meeting with the, those part-time workers this, this afternoon. We have a bunch of kids signed up already to come and participate in that, able to do some outreach work also. So, it's an exciting time. Also, wanted to thank you and let you know that the two ARPA-funded positions that you approved are, are starting on July the first. That, one is for the Food Systems Coordinator, and the other one's for the Digital Literacy and Skills Agent. So, that's kicking off. Excited about that. We've got some good applicants, and we've got some good hires coming in for that. Also, want to thank you, of course, for the continued support of something that's dominated much of my time, is the Farm Food and Family Education Center. We're having lots of meetings with architects and, and specialized groups. We took a trip to Boone to look at the food hub. Very exciting work, and the potential that it's going to bring to agriculture in Randolph County. So, we appreciate that continued support. Also, on that note, I really want to appreciate and shout out to Paxton. Paxton does amazing work. I sent him on a, a chase today, maybe, with something that's happening at the, at the site. So, he is, he is always willing and has been very great help, and is a great resource for our counties. I give a shout out to Paxton for his continued work. Be happy to answer any questions, but appreciate your support.
Questions? Thank you, Kenny. Thanks for your patience. Good honors. Building inspections? David?
I'm happy with the Manager's proposed budget. I did increase my fuel expenses for next year. I also have requested two additional vehicles and fifty thousand dollars for the condemnation fund, which will carry over, you know, year after year until it's used up. But that's all I had. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Staying busy, aren't you?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions? Thank you, David.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for your patience. All right, Ross?
Are we done? Because you're always laughing, Ross.
I think, I thought you was already up here, Ross.
Yeah, it feels like it was just yesterday. But thank you. I'm delighted to be here tonight to talk about our twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. I'd planned also to update you on some of our initiatives and activities during the current year, but in the interest of time, I've scaled that part back, mainly to update you on the Community Navigator Program, which I think is pretty important. The slideshow in your packet includes some of those other highlights, so please, please do take a look at that, some statistics and whatnot. We are happy with the Manager's budget. We have about forty-eight thousand dollars increase in non-salary revenue. For about forty thousand of that is the revenue we anticipated losing on account of going fine-free, and, which we did in January, and then about eight thousand is rising costs, particularly gas, for our vehicles, not including the mobile library. We're still using donated funds for that, so this is just our regular, regular vehicle maintenance and supplies. We talked Monday night about County Operation of the Ramsor Library, which is recommended for consideration. Our budget also included a request for a museum curator position beginning mid-year, when we expect construction on the Courthouse Renovation Museum to begin if the museum moves forward without delay. The curator is not included in the Manager's proposed budget, and that's okay for now. As I've said before, the curator will be critical in the development, operation, and continued vitality of a museum, so I will renew that request if and when we go ahead with the museum project. So, overall, we're satisfied with the Manager's budget. So, let me stop there, and if you have any questions about the budget, I'll answer them, and then move on to the navigators. I am pleased to report that after just five months, the Community Navigator Program is meeting our goals, exceeding our expectations, and having a big impact on people's lives. You'll recall that Lisa Hayworth of the Partnership for Children convened the Library, Social Services, and the Health Department to propose for American Rescue Plan funding, the idea of placing three social workers in the library system to respond to the human services needs of the people in the community to prevent more serious interventions down the road, particularly where children are concerned. You funded it instead for one year with strategic planning reserve funds through the partnership. So far, we have hired two of the navigators, our Community Navigator Lead, Angie Polito, who's here tonight and has stuck it out with all of us, who started February sixteenth, and Dana Nance, who started April first. Angie has twenty-five-plus years as a social worker, including sixteen in Randolph County and five as a supervisor in Guilford County. Dana has twenty-plus years in Randolph County. One of the goals of the program was to offer service county-wide, and as of last month, we have office hours, so to speak, at each library, with Dana handling Archdale, Randleman, and Liberty, and Angie handling Ashboro, Seagrove, and Franklinville Ramsor. When Angie started last February, we thought, well, maybe she can start receiving referrals in a couple of weeks after she gets established, but she was ready to hit the ground running, and it was a good thing, because it was more like a day when the first requests for assistance started coming in, which shows you how evident the need was. Even before we publicized it, the community agencies were sending people her way, and by the end of the month, she had received fourteen referrals. Since then, as of May thirty-first, the navigators have received a hundred and sixteen referrals. That's an average of more than one per day. There were forty-one in May alone. Our goals for the navigators are not just to identify services in the community and refer people to, for help, but to follow through and make sure that the people get the help they need. So far, a little over fifty-two percent of, of clients have been successfully linked with services and followed through. Three percent through May are still in process. We had some come in in June, and they're, they're in the works, too. And then the remainder of that figure through May either didn't connect with the resources or we were not able to follow through to find out the outcome. Demographically, about seventy percent of the clients are women. The locations break down similarly to population and other activities in Randolph County. About forty-five percent are from the Ashboro area, sixteen percent have been from Randleman, eleven percent from Archdale, eight percent from Ramsor, seven percent from. 16% have been from Randleman, 11% from Archdale, 8% from Ramsor, 7% from Liberty, and a few from other parts of the county. Angie spoke Tuesday night to the Seagrove Town Council to help get the word out down there. Similarly, about 39% of the referrals have come from the libraries, and these are walk-ins as well as those referred by staff. 24% from community partners and 14% from the schools, and then churches, DSS, family and friends, what have you. One thing Lisa said when we started was that she wanted the navigators to be able to tell clients things like, Tuesday afternoon is the best time to go to such and such an agency. I put this slide together not to inflict a dense PowerPoint on you, but to show you the breadth of the agencies, organizations, businesses, professionals, and others that the navigators have engaged with to learn about services, receive referrals from or send people to, and how they are tirelessly working to find community resources and get the word out. And these, and these. This also makes a point about how hard it can be for the average person to navigate a maze of agencies and organizations to find help, and how multiple places may have a piece of someone's puzzle, and how valuable it is to have our navigators develop this expertise. Let me give you an example. There's a rapid, I found out from Angie, there's a rapid rehousing program through HUD for people who are in immediate or emergency need. The rapid rehousing agent for Randolph County works out of the Johnston Lee Harnett County HUD office. Who knew? Speaking of housing, the navigators have found that about 35, well, the number one issue is housing, and accounts for about 36% of their requests for help. And this is where children seem to be affected the most. Angie says it's kind of single moms seeking affordable housing, ad, help paying rent and utilities, critical home repairs, especially for elderly people, and some form of housing issue accounts for about 50% of their referrals. The navigators also are helping people find medical care or apply for Medicaid or both. They are seeing food insecurity and are helping with food stamp applications. They're helping people find employment and apply for jobs. Benefit enrollment of one kind or another is a frequent need, and that, as well as applying for jobs, often goes hand-in-hand with a need for digital literacy, and helping people through a complicated application process online. As we suspected, transportation in our geographically large county is another common need. The navigators have also dealt with a handful of referrals involving mental health, substance abuse, personal care needs, daycare, domestic violence situations, senior care, and even several instances of crisis intervention, although many of the people who seek help are in what I would call a slow-moving crisis. You know, they're in a bad situation that's only getting worse. This is where the navigator program is achieving our goal of arresting the slide toward more intensive intervention and getting people in a situation where they can begin to build a better life. It's also important to note that many, if not most cases, the individual or family doesn't have just one of the needs on this chart, but overlaid or overlapping needs that touch on several of the areas. Let me give you a couple of examples of the clients the navigators have served. Early on, one of our extension services librarians referred one of her homebound patrons. The woman was looking for different housing because she had mobility impairments that made her house hard to negotiate. Angie engaged with her and found that the mobility impairments were likely due to untreated medical conditions or treatable medical conditions, but the woman was not able to seek treatment because she couldn't afford it and she couldn't find adequate transportation to a doctor. So there you have interlinked needs. You can't solve one problem without solving the others. So Angie got the woman enrolled in Medicaid, got her signed up for Stay Well Senior Care at Randolph Health, which focuses on helping elderly people remain in their homes and provides transportation. Angie also worked with COC to help the woman with her heating bills. This was a case where the problem presented was not the problem that really needed to be solved. Another of Angie's cases involved grandparents raising grandchildren, which is a common living arrangement in Randolph County, and often results from the parents opioid addiction, as was true in this case. The mother had passed away. The grandparents were raising two children. The grandmother had died of COVID. The family was not coping well, and the children's performance at school was suffering. They were referred to the navigators by the partnership, which had been alerted by the daycare center. Angie connected the children of hospice for grief support, got the youngest child a special needs assessment at school, and found rental assistance for the grandfather. So here's some feedback we received about the navigators from our patron surveys in April. From Archdale, Dana Nance was wonderful. She helped me fill out some documents. I have MS and diabetes and couldn't have done this on my own. From Randleman, my first experience with community navigators, and I couldn't have been more pleased. Dana helped me with a job application. Without her help, I would have quit the process out of frustration. This service is so needed and valuable to us. We are fortunate to have it available to us. And from Ashboro, I really want to voice my appreciation. The library provides to me and others of the social services help. I've received help from Angie at the library in a very critical time in my life. Thank you. Don't either we nor the partnership or are requesting additional funding in this budget. You'll see the navigators as a service area in the budget, but that's to carry on in the new fiscal year with the funding already appropriated to the partnership. We're operating now with the two navigators, and we've had trouble through a couple of hiring processes finding the right person for the third position. Angie and Dana are managing okay. If we stick with the two, with the funding already appropriated, we can continue the program through the end of next fiscal year. And after that, there's some other avenues we're looking at to continue it. So the navigator program is off to an auspicious start. The only thing that remains is to continue getting the word out to those people who need the services the most. Finally, I always share some comments from our annual patron survey, which I've done in the context of Ramsor and this, but here are a couple more I really like. A Ramsor patron says, "My son, age 10, says it's his favorite place to go. All of my kids feel like the library is a second home where they're loved, welcomed, and encouraged on their reading journeys." And I love this one. Ashboro patron says, and this was to the question, "What does the library mean to you?" Freedom. Free your mind by reading nonfiction books on every topic imaginable. Free your spirit with fantasy and sci-fi novels. Free your heart with a love story. The library also provides free internet access for those who can't afford it, free activities for children, and much more. Even in the digital age, libraries are vital to our communities. Please take a look at the survey results at randofflibrary.org/survey22. We had 357 surveys returned, and people really took the time to write thoughtfully about the library. Thank you again, and thank you for your continued support. Thank you to Will and Hal for the work they do and the support they give us. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And Angie is here if you have questions for her.
Questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. You're going to do Coffee and Conversation at Archdale this month?
Thursday.
Public Works, Max.
Good evening. The main change in the Public Works budget is the, had a significant increase in expenses. However, every bit of that increase was due to scrap tires. So last year, y'all voted to transfer the scrap tire revenue that we received to Waste Management so they could deal with all the issues they were having. So I hate to lose the revenue, but I'm glad not to be getting all those phone calls. So I'm happy with my budget, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I've been getting your phone calls.
You're still getting them?
Yeah. I notified all about that.
Well, you always, you always get those complaints. I mean, a lot of times it's around tax period when everybody's buying tires or postponed buying tires. But, you know, hopefully they've fixed the problems.
He's supposed to be working on it, but I hadn't heard from him since I contacted him. So.
Thank you, Pax.
Commissioners, real quickly, I'll tell you guys, I emailed all of you a few months ago. Paxton really stepped up and helped with a problem that we were having with the county. Multiple agencies were dealing with it, the Sheriff's Department. I know David Bryant also stepped in, but an issue we were having, a piece of property on High Ridge Street, that's not done yet, but Paxton's really stepped up and helped solve a big problem that the county was having there, and so he helped those neighbors out.
Thank you that everybody worked together on that. But really, it was you guys with the money. Y'all, every year, y'all give me $10,000 to take care of illegal dumping, and we just had enough money left over that I was able to put a lot of money towards that one property, so.
It's been.
Thank you, Pax. All right, Will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You want the attorney to time me? Make sure we get out of here.
I thought we'd already heard it.
I can, I can, I can, if you want me to.
Just a couple of highlights for our administration budget. Jill mentioned the position that she needs in HR, front desk person. Excuse me. We're also asking for a position to help cover a lot of the reporting issues for all these different funds that we're getting or will be getting. You all know there's different requirements for the ARPA money. There's different requirements for the state grants that we've got. There's going to be a lot of reporting, programmatic and financial with regards to opioid, and it's just going to be much more efficient, and we've got somebody that we can devote to keep up with a lot of that stuff. So that's the main things in the administration budget. We also had $20,000 that we put in there. We would like to have some software for public information requests, and that will help make AMI a little bit more efficient as well, too, because that gets to be quite a bit of time when they start to come in.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Comments? Questions, Will? Will, three hours later, wrapping it up. I don't know why some of y'all stayed here. We have to.
Afraid one of the others is going to get something they're not.
That's right. All right. Thank all of you for participation tonight. And as I said at the very beginning, it's just another step as we work toward adopting this budget. And obviously, we have a lot of things to consider. And Hal and Will have left us the how do we do this part. So that's what we get all the big money for. So thank all of you again for being here. I have a motion to adjourn.
Some of you.
We are adjourned. Please be safe tonight. Mark, thank you.